Good morning, folks.
Good morning.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming today. We'd like to convene the Fayette County Commissioners Meeting Tuesday, October 15th, 2013, at 10:00 a.m. Please stand for a prayer and -- Pastor?
Thank you. True prayer. Dear my Father, thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day you've given us. Thank you, Father, for Jesus Christ that died and crossed and rose again. We give you all praise, honor, glory, Father, for bringing him to us. And, Lord, coming up in 26 days, we're going to be remembering our veterans. Lord, we pray, Lord, that you help us to remember that greater love has no one than this, that a man laid down his life for his friends, and veterans that have willingly signed on the dotted line to sacrifice for our freedoms. 1.2 million veterans have died to provide the freedom that we stand on right now. We're asking you, Father, to bless this meeting and to bless those veterans. Lord, help us to figure out a way that we can reach out to them, especially on that day, as we are losing more and more veterans every day, especially the World War II veterans. But we're asking that you would allow us to conduct this meeting with urgency and with efficiency, but also, Father, that it would be done in such a way that it would be upholding to our taxpayers here in Fayette County. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please turn for the pledge of duty.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a few amendments to the agenda today.
Reverend McGee wants to --
I just want to make an announcement. October 26th, we're dedicating another Ten Commandments monument. That'll be in YPA at the Popular Run Church of God of Prophecy. It's right off of Popular Run Road. If you follow -- if you go off towards Normalville, you take Idney Creek Valley Road across, turn left on Popular Run, you'll run right into the Church of God of Prophecy project at noon, and we will be honoring the veterans that day, too. Thank you very much. And obviously, all of our commissioners are more than welcome to come and say a few words about the Ten Commandments. God bless you.
Thank you. We do have some amendments to the agenda today. I will read those. The first one is to consider a motion to ratify the hiring of attorney Thomas Pelles from the Meyer Dora Law Firm to represent Judge Warman and Judge Solomon in the Mantinski case. The second one is to consider --
I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda for discussion.
Second.
The second one is to consider a motion to waive the grant timing for the Laurel Highlands Visitor's Bureau for consideration of a demolition grant in regard to the Cobblestone Hotel Project in the city of Conuswell.
A move.
A second for discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, we have to ratify the -- we didn't take a real call on the first one.
Exactly.
We did not put it on the first one. We had a nomination and a second.
No, second.
Yeah, no.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Third one is consider a motion to have the Conuswell -- consider a motion to have the Conuswell Redevelopment Authority administer the demolition grant for the Cobblestone Hotel Project in the city of Conuswell.
Aye. I'm in motion.
For discussion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to amend the lease between the Fayette County Commissioners and the Fayette County Agriculture Improvement Association to account for the construction of the new county jail located on parcel 09-31-0049.
Move.
Second for discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I make a motion to amend the agenda. Move to table all actions concerning the new jail construction and to hold a meeting of the commissioners on Monday, October 21st, at 10:00 a.m. to discuss and review alternatives that have not been yet discussed regarding the construction of the new facility.
There's been ample opportunity over the past year-plus to address any other alternative solutions to this.
I'm sorry, can I amend that before you --
Yeah, please go. Please go for it.
To discuss and review alternatives that were not discussed in the Crabtree Prison meeting study regarding the construction of the new facility.
Is there any -- let me ask this question. Is there any written documentation that we could review in terms of today's discussion?
For those potential alternatives.
I will have some for Monday, October 21st, at 10 o'clock.
Again, it's hard to vote on the blind, and that's what that vote would disallow would be. Ma'am?
Please.
All of this, everyone will have an opportunity to just make comment before we vote on any items, okay?
Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? Motion dies for lack of second.
I'd like to make a motion. This is in anticipation of what's going to happen throughout the meeting. Move to hold advertised commissioner work sessions for all matters concerning new jail construction, beginning first Tuesday of November and continuing each month thereafter, with said work sessions to be held in the commissioner's conference room in the courthouse.
Here's the thing. You know, we've been working very, very hard, very diligently, over a year now on this project, and, you know, to have somebody step in that wasn't a part of this at all and try to dictate, you know, when and what we're going to do going forward is somewhat disingenuous. So, for that reason, I'm not going to second this.
First of all, that's -- to step in and dictate makes no sense because, as I said, it would be to have a commissioner's work session. Commissioners mean three commissioners or two commissioners, a majority. Hopefully, all three would be there. It would be an advertised public meeting, and it would be to discuss matters concerning the new jail construction, nothing prior. This would not have anything to do with whether or not a jail should be built or a jail should not be built. It is for us, as commissioners, to be in a position, all three of us, to be in a position to openly discuss and direct any administrative direction, all three commissioners involved. And this is after the vote of constructing a new jail. So this would be all new matters concerning the construction of the jail, and to provide updates so that all three commissioners and any members of the public who wish to attend can be kept up to date. There are going to be matters now, after today's votes, that entail contract administration, entering into contracts, negotiating the contracts, negotiating lease agreements, things of that nature. None of that, hopefully, was not discussed beforehand, hopefully was not decided beforehand. As we all know, by looking at the agenda, a couple of the items on the agenda is to enter into a new lease agreement with the Fair Association and other matters. And in order to do that, we're going to have to eventually bring that to a commissioner's meeting and vote on. It is important that we, as other counties do, check other counties. They have work sessions, advertised work sessions. This one here would be solely for these matters, so that if there is a discussion on the Fair Board lease, negotiation of future leases with perhaps this women's detention center, and anything pertaining to this, advertising and discussions with the bank. There are a number of items that the Board of Commissioners will be voting on, and before the vote, we'll need to have some discussion. Rather than only limiting it to a commissioner's meeting at 10 o'clock once a month, to have these meetings on the first Tuesday of every month, which would be prior to our agenda meeting, we can have a lot of things ironed out, a lot of questions asked and answered, so that the commissioner's agenda meeting and regular meeting can then be taken care of more efficiently, and no one has to say, "Well, I didn't know that. What did we do here? Who met with whom?" Things of that nature. There's no reason why we cannot take an hour out of our month, out of our day, at the beginning of the month, for these particular purposes. There's no reason whatsoever. One other thing, Mr. Commissioners Abatowski. The prison working group was formed to gather information about -- to gather information concerning the overcrowding issue. That information has now been gathered, it has now been disseminated, and based on that gathering and dissemination of information, the Board of Commissioners today is going to make decisions. So therefore, the work that -- the scope of work that was involved with the prison working group, which is three citizens and staff, county staff for the most part, has been concluded. And now, it is time for the commissioners to make certain that we are all well-informed before we take any actions, and by having a work session, that will do -- that will meet those.
I have no -- may I?
I'm done.
I have no problems with these work sessions. I think that this is something that would provide information not only amongst ourselves, because the Lord knows we don't -- unfortunately, I can say that word with a lot of passion. Unfortunately, we don't communicate as well as we should as three commissioners. I think the work session's a good idea. I just think that at this point, let's take the initial step and then approach the work sessions based on, you know, let's look at our schedules, let's make sure they're advertised, let's make sure we set agendas, based on the progression of what occurs today. This is all new to me. I've never built a prison before. I would prefer not to be building a prison. I would have preferred it had been done a long time ago, but the fact of the matter is, it was not. So, I agree. I think this is a great way of disseminating some of the information that's going to be provided us by the architects and the engineers. I'm just saying that let's take this step first, and I will acknowledge and support conducting these sessions, as you had just brought forth to the board, but I'm not today. Let's address this issue, let's put this issue behind us, and then let's move forward, and let's progressively deal with this matter as we move along. That's all I'm saying.
If we don't address it today by voting to hold these advertised commissioner work sessions and setting the date, the first Tuesday of the month, at 10 o'clock in the commissioner's conference room, then when would we be making that decision? We can't make the decision outside of the commissioner's meeting to do so.
We could make the decision to advertise. We've done it before, outside of the scope of a commissioner's meeting, to conduct special meetings for the purpose of providing information, or in this case, a work session, so.
I would have to ask to confirm with either one of the two county solicitors that are sitting here.
Simply by advertising, that would be suffice pursuant to the county code.
If we make the decision back in the conference room after we leave this meeting, it may not go the first Tuesday of the month, it may not go at 10 o'clock, and then we'd have to ratify the decision anyway. Is that not correct, one of the two county solicitors?
Yeah.
Okay, so, in essence, what we would be doing is not taking any action now, go back to the commissioner's office, talk about it, have an email sent, something be done, two commissioners or three decide, and then next month, it would be to ratify. Why not just do it now? What's wrong with having --
Do you know your schedule, the first Monday of each month? I don't --
First Tuesday.
First Tuesday.
The reason I didn't choose Monday is just for purposes of some people having a long weekend.
I don't know our schedules for that. I would like to look at that. I do support what you're saying, though. I think it's a wonderful idea.
I'm suggesting that we have it on the first Tuesday of the month because we do have our commissioner's agenda meeting on the second Tuesday of the month, and this would allow ample time, well, not ample, at least a week, so that commissioners can gather the information and be prepared, so that we can place these items on the agenda for the commissioner's meeting without what we're doing now. This information would be gathered, and we wouldn't have to second guess or say, "Well, who met with whom?" All the information would be there.
Right.
And also, by having the advertised work sessions, it is not just for us to exchange the information. You know, if we are going to be amending a lease agreement with the Fair Association, then we need to meet with them. And while some of those negotiations may be private due to -- maybe, I mean, it's private meaning under executive session.
Executive session.
Yes.
Real estate, legal.
Yeah, right. Then all we would have to -- you can't certainly have that meeting, they can't come to us, and we can't go to them and start negotiating without having an advertised meeting. Is that not correct, if you have two commissioners?
I don't know that you can't be negotiating. I'm not sure what your definition of that would be, but obviously, nothing can be concluded until.
So that there would be no issues with having the commissioners meet with the Fair Board and any other matter. I mean, there's going to be matters such as, you know, the subdivision plans and other things, so that the commissioners can sit down in a room, in a conference room, and discuss administratively the way in which we're going to go about doing this, and so that there's no questions at a later date.
Wouldn't that take the input also of the architect that we're going to hire as to what the subsequent next steps will be? And should we not develop that communication in order to advance these work sessions, which, again, I will reiterate, I think is a good idea, and I will support it? I'm just asking that we advance from this meeting, speak with those that are going to be involved in the project, if in fact the project is successfully awarded today and passed today, that we would understand what the next step or steps would be, and then set up these work sessions. I agree with you. We -- I just, you're saying subdivisions, you're saying that. Let's talk to those who know more about the construction of the new facility than we do.
And by having the commissioner set work sessions on the first Tuesday of every month at 10 o'clock, then we can designate what for the architect to come into the --
Well, I would like to first speak with the architect and determine what the subsequent discussions would be, what's the next step.
That would be the purpose, Commissioner, of having a commissioner's --
I understand that.
Okay, certainly.
That's my motion.
Certainly, I'm not prepared to -- you know, I have a pretty busy schedule, so I can't tell you today what day would be best for me. Another point I'd like to make, Commissioner Zimmerman made an assumption that was incorrect. First of all, the prison working group is not -- their work isn't done. It's not even close to being done. There's a lot of continuing work, a lot of additional information to be gathering through the course of determining some of the programming that we need for the facility, determining what size of space and working, actually, working width. You know, we're still in the throes of developing -- we're still in the throes of developing our operational specification, and that needs to be relayed to the architect. So we're going to have a lot of communications, a lot of interaction between the prison working group, including the architect.
The --
And including going through transitional stages. I mean, we still have, and we'll probably start this maybe 10 months prior to the facility being completed, you know, we still have to look at our staffing issues, we still have to look at the efficiencies of that, which is the, you know, the kind of the cornerstone of this whole thing because of our, you know, the staffing is our biggest cost of operating a jail. So we have to look at that, we have to look at the training issues, changing potentially some job descriptions, and the organization itself that's going to staff the new facility. So there's a lot of things that we're going to be doing, you know, right up until the time the key is turned to open up the new facility, so.
I totally agree with that, and that is all the reason why it needs to be in the hands of the -- those who are authorized by election, by code, and by virtue of being in accounting, to make those decisions and to give those directives, which are the three sitting commissioners. The prison working group, again, do not have any authorization, any legal authority, to negotiate, discuss, move ahead, talk about all of the things that you just discussed. And you're correct, Commissioner Mursini, those are important issues that need to be discussed, given that these items are going to be passed. Therefore, to have it under the direction and the control and the information of the three commissioners by having a legally advertised commissioner's work session, we can then set that time aside and have those meetings. And I'll do one other thing. Given that the prison working group meetings have already been set, and you had mentioned that your calendar, you don't know what your calendar is like, I would --
I just assume having it on the same day, we do have the prison working group meetings.
I would say, what day, can someone please tell me what day the prison working group meetings are set?
The third Thursday of every month at 9:30 on.
Okay, then we would have --
That would be more efficient to just combine --
And I would say that --
Just advertise the meetings, if that's what it takes.
For it to be a commissioner's work session.
I am.
And we would have -- okay, then, excuse me. I move to hold the advertised commissioner work sessions for all matters pertaining to the new jail construction to be held on at 9:30 on the third Tuesday of every month, beginning -- third, what did I say? Tuesday, third Thursday of every month, beginning in October. This would be a commissioner's work session, and I would think that every sitting commissioner here understands what that entails, as well as the two county solicitors. Again, we are the three sitting commissioners. We are the only ones who have the authority to move a project forward, to make administrative decisions, to whatever the case may be. The prison working group only had authority given to them by the prison board to gather information, not to negotiate, meet with individuals, make any things of that nature. This here is for matters after the official vote is taken, which is going to happen at the end of this meeting, towards the end of the meeting, for all actions moving forward. Which would allow, by having it to be a commissioner's work session, would also allow the board to come in and meet with us. There's issues that I'm hearing, which I haven't substantiated, regarding the airport and flight paths, so if anyone there wants to come in and discuss those matters with us, that's the time to do it. Discussions regarding banking facilities, discussions, everything, we all know. That's my motion.
I'll second that. To be held at 9:30.
As I said, I support it. I think it's a good way of communication. I would suggest that we have some structured agenda to the work session. I would hope that we would have some structure to it, and I think it's a great way of demonstrating or showing the public the progression, if in fact we would advance this project today, of where we're going. And if some parties have interest, either in a positive or a negative way, they're able to address those, such as commissioners in Ron Kettlewood who do with light patterns or something of that nature, so. And it fits a consistent schedule that has been followed by virtue of the prison board acting on the third Thursday, so I can't third the motion, but I will vote aye on it.
All those in favor? I have my second. Item number three, is there any public comment on any agenda items? Yes, Mr. Mazza.
Mr. Mazza, can I interrupt you one moment, please? I know you -- how can I interrupt you? We have a department head here who has an agenda item, and then she would like to -- be mindful, she would go first. It's an agenda item, so she can get back to work. Thank you. She wants to bring -- tax claim law office wants to bring some more attention.
Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning.
What item number is this, Sarah?
Item number 13.
No, it's now 14. We all have to do it there.
Oh, sorry. 14. 14 on the tax claim. This item concerning properties not sold at pre and clear, remaining in the name of a county or not. Just know that there are going to be some other things that we're going to have to come back and vote on if we do not deed them to the county. I don't know what's the decision is. Obviously, it's not voted on yet, but if we do not deed to the county, there's some -- a few things that are going to change, being, you know, whether or not we let the owner pay the taxes to remove it from the repository list, what the minimum bid is going to be, the process after someone bids on it is going to be different, as Mr. Kupp mentioned. So it's not as simple as, are we getting them to the county or not? It's going to change our procedure as you have adopted in the past.
Sarah, let me ask you a question. Will that only change if this Board of Commissioners votes in the affirmative to place it in, to place those properties in the name of Fayette County?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The other one.
Yes, not affirmative change.
The item that's on the agenda isn't an either-or item, okay?
Right.
Okay, so that's why I'm asking. The item on the agenda, and it was worded by solicitor Kupp last Tuesday, that's why we asked him to do --
Correct.
-- is place the properties that sold at the pre and clear sale in the name of Fayette County. Now, if that is passed today, in the name of Fayette County.
It remains the same.
Or would there be any other issues that would, with our already adopted procedure that would need to be addressed?
No, our adopted procedure was put in place the way it is now, meaning they're deeded to the county, so nothing would change if this was approved.
Okay, because it is in the name of the county right now.
Our procedure is --
Yeah, that's why actually that should have been. Agenda item should have said, "Consider either placing it in the name of the county or --" consider either placing it in the name of the county, or keeping it in the name of the delinquent taxpayer.
If, if you vote yes on this, nothing changes. If you vote no, then, then we implement those processes that we, that Sarah's alluding to.
Well, we meet and decide-
What's the process of all?
Right, because the processes, procedures and processes that we have in place now are very specific as to what the bidder must do, and it was adopted by board of commissioners. And, more importantly, or not equally important, is the bid amount that we set. Because if we no longer have it in the county's name, it may be who, the board of commissioners, not to just set the minimum bid, which would cover just the court cost, it would maybe oom us to set a higher amount.
Pay all the back taxes.
Set a higher amount, or pay all the back taxes.
Will that be in our aim?
Right, so, so if, if we do not pass this, keeping it in the, our name, and we most definitely would have to come back and have another vote, because we would be changing the minimum bids, because that, that was all going to be on.
I, I think what you would wanna do-
He's saying yes, and I-
I think what you would wanna do, is if this vote is, if you vote no on this, then Sarah's gonna have to come up with a different set of procedures, and you're gonna have to vote on them.
And then-
Procedures and setting them, and, and deciding on the bids.
Also, and then, and then it's gonna be, we're gonna have two different sets of procedures, 'cause our list is gonna be missed.
Right.
We're gonna have Fayette County properties that have to follow this list.
Until they-
Not, well-
And they're not running out, I think when we began this, that was like, two hundred, we might be down to a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, it's not.
But, yeah, se- separating the list, that's not an issue, we just have to put it in big red bold letters for the, the individuals, but we would still have to come back and make the decisions on minimum bids and things of that nature.
But, but in the end, we're taking the illness off of the county of, of inheriting these properties that folks have walked away from, and have put the county in a position of, of being responsible for, i.e. maintenance, demolition, whatever the case may be.
Yeah, that's the whole reason-
And that's the crux of the issue.
But, and the second issue, though, is also, we would, by changing it, we would be obligated to share in the, in the proceeds, as commission, as one of the solicitors pointed out in one of an email to us.
Yeah, the problem, the problem is that, that you probably have very few attending, where there'd be proceeds to share.
You're doing one right now. We are, we got a bid for, what, like thirteen, fourteen thousand, we have to share, so-
I don't think, as I recall running those numbers with, with Sarah, the, the one that you had thirteen or fourteen thousand, that still wasn't enough to pay all the taxes.
Okay, but regardless of that, what I'm saying is that Commissioner Zabutowski is right on one point, and that is, by remove, by, by keeping it in the name of the delinquent taxpayer, then it's, the responsibility for maintenance does not fall on the county.
Yes.
But, there is also that second issue that you pointed out, which is that if we keep it in the name of the delinquent tax owner, then any proceeds, and who knows, I mean, no one has a crystal ball with pro, then, then that also would be shared, whereas now we don't. So, I'm just, I'm not saying anything's right or wrong, I, I, I know how this will pass, I think we're all three in agreement on this. But, it's, the important part is, we have to be very clear, because we, we have a couple issues right now with some property owners, and with some municipalities, so we have to make sure we're on the same page on this, and very clear to the tax claim office.
And, and actually, the third issue that we haven't discussed is really the liability issue of, of those properties by keeping it, or putting it in Fayette County's name.
Right.
And that basically can trump everything else, usually, so, you know, that's the, probably the most important reason why we wanna leave it in the previous owner's name.
So, if it is in the previous, you're bringing this to our attention, when, you would need to know what the new procedure, which would include minimum bids, or-
Right.
But, by when?
Um, well, that's the thing, if, 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 if this is not approved today, and it does remain in the taxpayer's name.
Let's assume that it's going to be approved today and, and left in the taxpayer's name. Let's assume that.
I have a list of properties that were not sold at free and clear thirteen, that I've been waiting to put on the repository, not knowing whether we're deeding them or not. So, before I can put those on the list, I will need to know what procedures to attach, and what minimum bid price, and if they can, if the delinquent taxpayer can pay it in full to remove it from the repository list, just-
Okay, then you will need to get with Solicitor Kopp-
Yes.
And, come up with a draft of, uh-
Okay.
It, within, given that this-
Right, sure.
Okay, and come up with that, and place that on, request that, and place on the agenda for the minimum.
And that will have to be done before I can put them on the repository, just so everyone knows.
That's why you, and since you have it, that's why you would remedy that for November, so you have about thirty days.
My, my suggestion would be that if the item is rejected, as, as it's written, that whenever we have the, the November's agenda meeting, that Sarah and I will have a proposal that you can look at-
Prior to the meeting.
Prior to the agenda meeting, you can decide whether or not you wanna put it on the agenda, and then whether or not you wanna adopt it. I think that's the much more early way to handle it.
Thank you. Is there anything else, sir?
No, would you like me to wait until this comes up?
I don't, that's why we took you before.
I'm sorry, sir.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mazza, you're up. Again, we have a lot of people here today, so I'd like to request the comments delivered in the five minutes, please.
At the so-called public meeting regarding the prison issues, written questions only were permitted, and you decided which to answer. You dismissed my question under the guise that you didn't understand it. Proper public participation would have permitted me to explain it. It involved simple math, I know that's not your forte, but, uh-
Mr. Mazza, if I, if I could just make a statement here, I, I would appreciate that. Doing your comments, you know, you perfectly have a right to make your comments, but I would appreciate refraining from making personal attacks, or snide comments, please.
That is a comment.
That's actually an accusation.
You and the control room have been quoting over one million dollars is the cost to, to the county to farm out inmates, that's sixty dollars average cost to house and whatnot, and plus transportation, those are not true figures. The cost of housing, feeding, medicating, and security, securing, uh, in, in, in the county, in the home jail, should be subtracted from that million dollar. That would give you the true figure, unless you're housing, feeding, medicating, and securing prisoners in our home jail for nothing. In two thousand and twelve, the DOC inspection revealed a failure on eighty of a hundred and forty-two deficiencies, all of them were policy-related, none of them were structural related. Housekeeping and maintenance have been purposely neglected, as was pointed out by the union to the, to the, to the board. The DOC recommended that the inmates do the cleaning, as is done in other counties, and I, I would advise you to use the DOC suggested preventative maintenance and repair programs, and to institute a written policy that the DOC will find in compliance with thirty-seven, with the title Thirty-Six Policy Language. November fifteenth, the DOC is scheduled to inspect the, the facilities. Why not wait to see the result of their inspection before making a decision regarding the prison? You can also explore other means to deal with this problem without saddling the taxpayers with a fifty-seven million dollar debt. You can't rely on funds from sources that can, that can be non-existent in less years than the length of the debt incurred. If necessary, one thing you could explore is the use of modular construction. You can get ninety-six to two-hundred-and-fifty-six bed dorms from an outfit called Mod Space, and everything is complete, and it has, it, it has everything you need in a prison. And it, and they do it in half the time it takes to build one, and probably a lot cheaper than the fifty-seven million it was gonna, it's gonna cost taxpayers. One other thing I wanna touch on, this prison work group, was, the meetings were never advertised, and there's more than one commissioner attended any of their meetings, you were in violation of the Sunshine Act, and it's my understanding that there was at least one meeting where there was two commissioners.
Those were informational meetings, and, you know, that was, uh, every, every one of those meetings were attended by the newspapers.
I didn't say that, I said, if more than two commissioners were there, but they weren't at, they, by, according to Sunshine Act, you have to advertise, uh, at, at the, the meetings. Another thing I would like to know is-
There was, there was no deliberations, and there was nothing voted on at those meetings, so it's perfectly appropriate-
That is not the point, Al, we have, the point is- If I may, I'm, I'm- If you have, if you have a meeting, and there's two commissioners at that meeting, it's a public meeting- I'm the second commissioner you're referring to, Mr. Mazza, and I can assure you, my attendance at all, any of those meetings were, were, were very, very brief. Hello, thank you very much for, for working on behalf of the county, and I assure you, I assure you, sir, I hold in my possession a fifteen-page document that has detrimented my ability to work because of a lawsuit that was filed against me. And you know what that lawsuit was? It was a third! You can read it yourself if you'd like, sir. But I assure, yes, you're full of beans! That's what it shows. You're full of beans. For three years, I had to live under the cloak of a lawsuit that enabled, enabled me to do the things that I needed to do. I walked into those meetings, said hello, thank you for your service, I appreciate it. So, don't imply a Sunshine Act violation. If you wanna imply it, file it with the state. I didn't say I was gonna imply- File it with the state! Well, I'm tired of the accusations, file it with the state! File it with the state, Mr. Mazza, I'll give you the address, sir, file it with the state, or have the third commissioner file it with the state. File it with the state, sir. And, and I'm not full of beans. File it with the state, well, there may be something else then, but file it with the state. And I'm, I'm not full of beans, you just told me I'm making remarks about people. File it with the state! When you make an allegation that I violated the law, file it with the state. I'm not making allegations you violated the law, I'm tell, I'm saying that if more than, I'm telling you what the law gives. I'm, I realize that, trust me, I, I can recite the law here- I didn't accuse anyone. In this court's opinion. I accused nobody. You accused the third commissioner and the second commissioner. I said that if two commissioners were, were involved in any of those meetings, then those meetings were in violation of the Sunshine Act, that's what I was saying. I assure you, my presence at those meetings were hello, thank you for your service. I didn't name anybody! Well, I doubt that you were naming anybody else.
Mr. Mazza, if you could conclude your comments on the-
Yes. You have a seventy-year lease with the Fairgrounds people. I, I'd like to know how, how you manage, is there something in that lease that, that you can, you can break it?
Yeah.
You have a seventy-year lease, they have a seventy-year lease on the Fairgrounds.
Well, we have an agenda item to discuss that. Any other, any other comments?
Well, that's, that's the idea, there is public comment on agenda items, because if we, if we move off of that, and then go to the agenda item, then there's no public discussion, so that's, that's the whole purpose of this.
Well, there's, there's-
I'm asking a question, I'm asking if you think, evidently, you-
What, what, Mr. Mazza?
You have read the lease.
Mr. Mazza, what's your question regarding the lease?
Well, if they have a seventy-year lease, you just can't arbitrarily break the lease, there has to be something in the lease that gives you the right to do that. I'm no attorney, but-
I was able, um-
I'm not stupid either. I'm old, but I'm not stupid.
There, there's an item on the, um, well, as you saw, it was just placed on the agenda to make a motion to amend the lease between the commissioners for that, and, and the fair board for that particular parcel. If that, if that vote is in the affirmative, that we would amend the lease, then most, that's only giving the commi, I mean, read what it says, I mean, it's, it's not specific, it only is saying that the commissioners is going to amend the lease, but if the other party doesn't want to amend it, we need to have the particulars, hence the reason why I think it's very important that we have the commissioner work session, so we can discuss this. I was able to find one lease, it's not the original lease, and I was only able to get to obtain it this morning, it's the lease that was attached to a resolution that the commissioners passed in the year two thousand and six, which extended the lease agreement an additional thirty years, because the lease agreement was to expire twenty, twenty-twenty-two. In March of two thousand and six, the board of commissioners by resolution unanimously passed to extend that lease for an additional thirty years, which would make the lease expire two thousand and fifty, but, I couldn't, two thousand and fifty-two. In that, in that document that I have, it doesn't reference, um, early out, it does not reference, as far as I saw this morning, um, changing the acreage or anything of that nature, however, I could be wrong, because I only looked at it very quickly, but, um, that's the reason why, you know, we can say we're going to amend the lease, but if the other party doesn't agree, then, or if there's some stipulations and things, then those matters have to be discussed. That's why I want them to be discussed at a commissioner's work session, and then, if the lease is amended, then we're going to have to bring it back here to the commissioner's board.
If I disagree, it's, that's a whole different story.
Well, correct, and it would also come back for, for here for a vote.
I just wonder how arbitrarily you could, you could break a lease, that's all.
We'll have to pull that agreement, and then also, I, I did, um, there is a, a mortgage on that, um, between the county of Fayette and a bank, for like three hundred and ten thousand dollars, it's an open-end mortgage, and, and I looked at that quickly, and it does not state how long that mortgage is, so that, before we can amend this, we're gonna have to check with the bank, 'cause the county is on, um, on, on the line for an open-end mortgage of three hundred and ten thousand, that was done in two thousand and six as well, so we have to, now I-
Well, there's three parties involved.
Well, all what I can tell you is, I do not know how long that mortgage is, okay, but if it is, um, if it's effective today, and it's still not paid off, which I would doubt that in six years that it is, we definitely will have to talk with the bank and make sure that we can give up that acreage. And I just, actually, I just learned this this morning, just going through some paperwork.
Well, thank you, that answers my question anyhow.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mazza, are there any other comments, public comments on agenda items?
I know, I may as well get mine, uh, five minutes today. And now I see why we have to have somebody with a gun here, it's not the audience, I don't think. Okay.
That's for your protection, then.
Don't give me that, I, I, do you think I just fell off the garbage truck or something?
Please, please, please make your comments.
My comments. I have watched this, today was another opportunity to watch how you should not run a government, a local government, or any government, where there is a absolute lack of opportunity for a minority committee- minority commissioner or representative or whatever to get anything across. And what that person may be trying to tell us is that there is another way of looking at this. Now, in my mind, what has happened is, and I think I'm right about this, because there's been numerous occasions where I've seen it, a decision was made in somebody or somebody's minds. They decided that they would now use every opportunity and every weapon they have to pass this thing through the government and to put it up no matter what the opposition said, period. That's not governing, that's ruling. And as I see us here, we have a kind of dictatorship going on. That is not... And we see it all over, it's not just here. That is not the way the government is supposed to run. It's a government of the people, not of the people, for the people. The people have been left out. I'll start with some of them. I'm asking for you not to pass these motions today, the ones on the prison, for the following reasons. The process followed in making these decisions to build a new prison is gravely flawed. The type of membership on the prison working group, I went through it the other night, almost all of them are beholden to the county or some sort of political issue, or even those who are citizens have a relationship with the county. Concealment of group activities, there are no written minutes. How can you say it's public when there are no written minutes? I've gone through it. There are people who have asked for the records, they're not there. Concealment of the group activities, there's not even a recording. And when the meetings were held, since there was no publication of them, nobody really knew that you were holding meetings, and that the press was there as nice, but their job is to take down what they see as the important facts. What they see as important facts are not always the important fact. It depends on your... How you're interpreting the issues. And you know as well as I do that some of that stuff was very, very slanting. There are times when questions have been asked by the taxpayers in this decision-making process, and they were not answered. Today was a good exchange of that. I don't have to say much more than you can see of what happened. That should never have happened. There are less than truthful answers to the questions involving the taxpayers. Not so much out and out lying, but when I was in Catholic school many, many years ago, they called them lies of omission, just not giving the information that you should be giving. I'm not allowed to look at you, so I'll just keep my back to you.
So who?
All of you. I've been told I need to do this, and I'd love to look at you, but I can't. Don't take it seriously.
I'll take anything I want serious. Unlike you, I can say what I want to.
I agree.
But don't just put your finger at me.
My mistake. I apologize.
Well, you know why you did it.
No, no. I didn't do it. I didn't even think about you being back there. All right. Less than truthful answers to questions involving the taxpayers in a decision-making process for months, telling us that we were to wait for a report that came, and we had about a week to digest it, or maybe two weeks. I went to the meeting, and if I were the type who could be easily intimidated, I would have been intimidated. We had armed guards there, sheriff's car parked out front, and one unarmed guard there. And the only way that the community could in any way communicate with commissioners is by writing down questions on paper. That is not a public meeting where discussion is held. That was an absolutely controlled meeting. Then when the report was presented, you couldn't read it, okay? Because it was so small. And you can see I wear glasses, and anybody else in there who might have some problems couldn't see what was up there. But you did post it, and I thank you for that. But by the time it was posted, there was little time to respond. You said that we've had all these opportunities to give you options. We've had no opportunity to give an option other than your options, which are build a new prison. You can build it either where we have it now, or you can build it on the Fair Ground. There is no other option, because doing nothing was never an option. To me, this... You closed down the process, the democratic process for people to be able to contribute to what is happening. I know the tactics that you used are used in big corporations and businesses. I think they don't belong in the public sector. That's not the way business should be done in the public sector. I also have a problem, I think, with how this is all going to be paid for. I know that you're telling us that it's going to be Marcelo Schele and Acina. Well, if you keep losing jobs in this county the way we are, there will not be enough money to pay for keeping the courthouse warm, let alone building a 30-some-million-dollar jail. We've lost probably anywhere from 500 to 600 jobs, and probably will lose more. I have no idea of how we're going to pay for this, because the only other source of income are real estate taxes. And the real estate taxes, for most people who are sitting here right now, they don't have the extra money to give you to do this. I also kind of wondered, and don't tell me the Marcelo Schele... I read Act 13 last night, the section on what you can spend it on. For the life of me, I don't know which one of those items you are going to put it under.
Public safety.
It's not public safety. That's not public safety. Did you look at the names they have there? A prison is not necessarily for public safety. We have a prison. I do want to say I agree. I also went back to the document, and the email was posted on your blog, Commissioner Zimmerman. What was said by Mr. Killinger is not true. The Department of Corrections has never said they were going to tear down our prison if we don't do this or we don't do that. It's that kind of twisting and slanting of the truth that made me very, very, I guess, cautious and skeptical. And so I'm here simply to say, I could go on, and I know I've spent my five minutes plus. All of this has tended to intimidate people, and so I've stopped discussion and participation in the function of government. As I said, the process is flawed and structured to silence the people and ramrod the project down a taxpayer's throat. Once again, I believe, and this is my belief, and you can disagree with me, and I know you would, special interests and power politics, I want, those who want a prison regardless of what happens, and they're willing to do anything in their power, including calling names, et cetera. Some of the names I've seen, the minority commissioner called the insider's politician or the politician's politician, and I'm thinking, wow, we're getting kind of tough now. So once again, the special interest in power politics will win or doesn't? Because the county has lost. It's lost the opportunity to have public participation and to do something that might been a kind of thing to be proud of. But they had no participation, they still have none. You are still trying to figure out how we can ram this through. That's my biggest objection. I'm asking you to delay the votes on this and to allow the public opportunity to understand exactly what it is that's going to happen to them. The $60 million you're talking about, or $50-some million, isn't the end of it. When you start talking about programs and things, we're going to be in debt for $100 million, et cetera. So, thank you, and I know I took more time than I should.
Thank you for your comment.
Mr. Ali, may I ask you a question? It was raised by an earlier comment, that your numbers regarding the outside rentals were not accurate.
Labor, I believe the quote was fictitious, or that they didn't encompass food and things like of that nature.
Would you please, just for my sanity, elaborate on the cost of farming outside inmates, and how in fact your numbers would be incorrect or inaccurate based on?
They would not be. The number 14,310 should stick with the citizens at this point. That's how far away from $1 million we are. And people say that these numbers don't exist. In my book, a requisition is that any member of the public is welcome to look at...
Requisitions?
Requisitions.
These are signed by the commissioners, authorizing payment to the respective counties for boarding of the inmates. Is that correct?
That is correct, strictly for boarding of the inmates. This does not encompass any other costs.
We don't receive any reimbursement? We don't receive anything from boarding them outside of the county, do we?
We do not. In addition to the three commissioner's signatures, you have the department head, and you have the chief clerk that attests to it. So if five people are shuffling around things behind my back, I find that highly improbable, most especially when I have canceled check stubs that verify all the numbers that I've put out. And for the record, for those who like to write things down, as of today, we have spent $985,689.50 factually contained in this book. If you go back to all the other years that I listed, I've only brought two years with... Three years with me. In 2012, we spent $690,153.79 in inmate rentals. In 2011, we spent $265,847.51. And in 2010, we spent $495,000 approximately.
And those are subject to audit as well?
They are very subject to audit.
Let me follow up on that. No one's ever disputed, I don't know why you see...
Oh, yes, they have.
They disputed it?
Wait, let me finish what I was going to say. No one ever disputed that requisitions were signed by commissioners, okay? Whether it's three or two, regardless. Of course, they were signed, because bills were paid. The statements that have been made is that millions have been spent on out-of-county rentals.
That's true.
The statements per year. The statement that was actually quoted was that $700,000 per year has been spent. Commissioner Zabatowski asked about, you know, the requisitions, and he also made a comment regarding, are they audited? Controller Lawley just presented to the public the 2010, 12, 11, and 10 audited numbers, okay? That's not... So that's per year. No one's disputed those numbers. Those are audited numbers. That's not $700,000 or millions. Prior to that, in the year 2009, the undisputed audited number for out-of-county rentals was $25,967, the year 2008. $51,990 audited statements. The year before that, 2007, $9,585. Year before that, 2006, $51,102.87. Prior to that, 2005, $238,568. And prior to that, the year prior to that, $17,181.48. Those are audited numbers. So I believe that when people say we are spending millions every year, those aren't millions every year. We're just... No one's saying... Understand, no one is not saying that the issues of the overcrowding should not be addressed. It's in what manner and in what option. But to say that millions or $700,000 per year has been spent, you can't dispute the audited financial document that was presented to the three commissioners by Sam Lunch, who is our financial consultant, and for the audited per-year numbers, you can't dispute it. I believe that's what... And I don't want to put words in any citizen's mouth, but whoever said it, I can't remember if it was...
Just one comment. If you go to the commentary, it's in the paper today, you will find out what this comment is about. It says thus we would need to ship... And he goes on further. Mr. Ali's $60 per day figure would be offset by virtue of the fact we would no longer be feeding them, clothing them, doing laundry, supplying guards, paying utilities, et cetera, et cetera. While these offsets, the $60 per day he is quoting as a showstopper, would be closer to $20 a day. Because when you pay for them to go someplace else, the money you would spend here should be deducted from that car.
That's exactly what I... I don't know the editorial. I didn't read the page.
It's here. It's right today, bottom of the page.
We're just... But what we're just talking about now was just audited numbers.
By the way, I want to make this clear. I did not provide these figures. This was done by John Ducanet, a registered financial advisor, worked for the Mellon Bank, it is a local banking economic account bank. These figures are legitimate.
Evelyn, thank you.
You're welcome.
What we see here is a trend that continues based on the projections of the study that was done in 2001. Again, I would prefer not to be sitting here today talking about building a new prison. I'd prefer to talk about economic development. But the fact of the matter is, this problem is not going to go away. And looking at an old police station that has been condemned, and I thought we discussed that a while back, is condemned, and quite frankly, the refurbishing cost would be astronomical to only... Let me finish. To fix a relatively small amount of inmates that you can even incarcerate there. I mean, this is a problem that we need to address. And we have two options. Either we ignore it, or we...
There are multiple options. You just didn't...
Please.
Evelyn, I assume...
I will leave you with that.
Let's give other individuals a chance to make their comments.
We've...
Okay, I'll just say one thing.
Yes, Mr. Mazza.
The figure that I made, the figure that I said was incorrect was incorrect because you didn't deduct what it would cost you to keep those inmates locally. And simple mathematics tells you that that's the fact.
The gentleman in the back, please. Yes, sir.
For those of you who haven't met, my name is John Ducanet. Been so known personally for many years.
Yes, sir.
And you love me, Mr. Abzini. We're meeting for the first time, and I commend you for bringing this prison problem to the surface and making it a priority for this county to review, because I think it has to be done. And I agree with you, we have to get it done. And I'd also like to make a couple of comments. I commend the motion that you approved today to continue discussing this and having some work sessions. I got a question on that in just a minute. But I also commend you for approving the day work release program, which I think is going to work out better than some people think it will. And to toot your own horn, it's only going to cost the county, if I'm right, $128,000, right? Because state's going to fund that with something like the remainder, the state MHMR funding.
Yeah, we'll utilize other programming dollars.
Yeah, so it's really a bargain. So I commend you for doing that, and I think you've done some very good things. The difficulty that we have with the people, and I apologize, obviously, some of you have not read the morning paper, yesterday's paper. I apologize. We had this into the pat of your hair, you'll contest that, or back this up, that I think we had it in the newspaper's hands in time to try to get it in last week's Sunday paper and this week's Sunday paper, but for various reasons that they have on policies of editorial printing, they couldn't get it in until yesterday and today. So I apologize, I know you haven't had a chance to read it and view it, but anytime you do have a chance, I think we who composed it are ready, willing, and able to discuss it with you and defend all the things that we comment on there, just since you brought it up. And so the numbers that we used, as I understand, and everybody's basing this on the fact that somebody went up on a ladder and looked down through a hole and really said, oh my goodness, how bad it is. That's about all we have to go on. Has anybody talked to the owner?
Yeah.
Commissioner Zimmerman has, and I have a friend who has, and...
But I'm not advocating renovating.
Okay. I understand that. But if you look at the numbers that are printed in the newspaper, we added not only the numbers that Mr....
Crabtree.
Yeah, Crabtree said would take to refurbish the new jail, we added $200,000. And if you want to add another $200,000, make it a million and a half. That figure that gave you about a million, two, make it a million and a half. You could gut the whole place, but go kick around the foundations, the foundation to fall on me. These are issues I think we have to bring out, not at this meeting, because I apologize, you haven't had a chance to read it. But I do commend the commissioners for getting into this and taking a front position. You have to get something... know, you have to get something done, and we want to help you get something done, but we think we could do it and save the county a lot more money than the plan that we're looking at now, so. Thank you for your time, then.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan.
Mr. Buchanan, that's why, before the next individual, if there is going to be another one, that's why I wanted to table the actions and for the commissioners to meet on Monday at ten o'clock, so that we could discuss other alternatives. And here's the reason why, because at prior commissioner meetings, when individuals, whoever they may be, me included, would question, as well citizens, we were told, be patient, let the Crabtree Slater group compile their information and present it. Once we have the facts, then questions can be asked and answered. So that's basically what the citizens did and I did, okay? So we got that report. It was presented, I asked the sheriff for a copy of it, he said he didn't have an extra copy. Finally, we all got copies. I had one by October first. Today's the fifteenth. There has not been any public meeting, and that's why I'm asking for, to have one, a public meeting, and more importantly, with the three of us, to discuss any other options because the Crabtree study was presented, and it presented four hundred and eighty-bed new building. Has any other discussion for alternatives been had with the three commissioners? The answer is not. You can't do it before you get the study, as they pointed out. So we got the study on, I got the study on sometime between the twenty-sixth and the first, we're at it. Apparently, there's a group, you and others, I didn't read the article this morning, I did read yesterday's paper. So apparently, you and others have some suggestions and ideas. I don't know if I agree with them or not, not all of them, because I only read, like I said, the first part of it. But also, some of the suggestions that I have that us three have not discussed, okay? Why not discuss it, okay? There was no other opportunity. Whether I would have went to the prison group meetings or not, you can't discuss it unless you have the report. Once the report, let's look at some other options. What does it hurt to have a discussion to at least review the other options? There isn't. But I didn't get a second, so it's not going to happen, at least with us three. Perhaps maybe I'll still have a meeting and ask your group, you know, to come, and I'll ask the other two commissioners to come, and.
Well, you did approve something to have work stations.
No, that's the work session, that's.
Who would attend the work sessions?
The commissioners in public, but that's not to discuss other options. No, and the reason, no, it wouldn't be, and here's the only reason. That's why I made two motions, okay? My first motion was to, let's postpone a vote today, and let's look at other options, okay? And then come back, and even if we have to have a special commissioners' meeting prior to next, the third Tuesday of the month. What the work session would be to discuss the matters concerning new construction. No doubt, unless I'm wrong, and I sure hope I am, these items on the agenda are all going to get passed. So there would be no need to bring up all these other options, because the commissioners will have already voted on it.
Well, that bothers me.
Well, of course it does, that's why I, that is why I made the motion to hold, and let's look at the other options. But at the very least, no one, what I believe is going to happen, at the very least, I want at least an opportunity for all three of the commissioners to be discussing every action that's going to take place after today, which would be new construction, and every step forward.
Did I understand, Commissioner Evzini, to say that Mr. Kellinger's group would be part of these planning sessions?
It wasn't, no, the motion was to hold a commissioner's work session on the third Thursday of the month, beginning this month at one-thirty.
Nine-thirty.
Nine-thirty. So that's the commissioner's work sessions.
And that's a correspondence.
Again, for not getting this into your hands before, but you can read what's in the newspaper, and if you need to answer, have questions answered on it, we, as a group, would be available, and we'd be glad to answer, address any questions that you might have, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Let me point out one thing here. I don't want people to think that all of a sudden, in the last two weeks, you know, we've decided to do something in terms of fixing our county jail problem. This project started July a year ago, in two thousand and twelve, July thirteenth, in fact, on Friday. I sent out a request, an email request, not only to the county employees, but I sent it out to the, I asked for participation from the general public to start a prison working group. Now, this prison working group, that, one of the things that it was tasked to do among its four teams, the financial team, the architectural team, the judicial team, and the programming team, for, you know, like child use behavior health and those types, they were to gather information, they were to go out and gather information and determine what all our various auctions are. I mean, we have a problem here, let's look at ways to fix it. I mean, this has been going on for over a year now. So I'm a little concerned that all of a sudden, when these, all these various options whittle down to a plan, that, a recommendation of how to go forward, then all of a sudden, we haven't talked about this, or, you know, and you don't have to have, you know, again, this was a voluntary request. We had, we have a lot of people in this prison working group that are very intelligent, very knowledgeable people, that have contributed tremendously with their time and effort, and with some, you know, and there's, there was good suggestions, and there was not so good suggestions. But everybody in the end agrees that, you know, the way forward is what we're currently anticipating doing. So I just, I don't want to make a look that, look like, that these individuals that have been working, in some cases, pretty much like a full-time job, I don't want to diminish their contributions, because they have contributed tremendously to this county. And so, you know, and I want to thank them for their efforts, and I want to thank them for their continued efforts as we go forward with this project.
And also, please note that in the final analysis of Crabtree, there were options given. It was not just the construction of a new facility. There were options of refurbishing the facility.
I was there, and I saw that there are three options.
If I may, that's more than, there were options, options being plural, three meaning more than one.
But that's not the idea of an option.
Evelyn, please.
Option one was to do absolutely nothing. Option two was to refurbit, to remodel the existing facility at the tune of seven million dollars and still maintain the same bed population of two hundred and thirty-nine.
No, you missed half of it. The other half was to build an addition to the prison.
That, I wasn't, I didn't get a chance to finish. Then there was the option that would have added to the current facility, basically building on top, would have eliminated parking lots, et cetera, we would have had to add some things. And then, of course, the final option would be the construction of a new facility. I realize maybe the PowerPoint presentation was small, I even had a tough time on, at certain locations of seeing it, but it was clear that when you looked at the cost, I mean, you can't say savings, because we're spending money no matter which way we're going, but the most effective, most effective was the construction of the new facility. Now, that's something that's going to be decided, but the fact remains is that it wasn't just, here it is, this is your choice, that's it. There were other options provided that we could.
Very, very slim, and I know, I shouldn't say this, I have to say it, and if I can't keep my mouth, then I'm going to leave.
No, go ahead.
But to me, those are controlled options.
Controlled, I don't understand what you mean controlled.
They were limited. They were limited by the thinking of the people who were in that room, all of whom had a connection in some way, they had a foot in this thing. This is related to their making a living for many of them, okay? And that is fine, they should be there. But there should have been some people there who were defending or looking at it from the point of view of the everyday real estate property tax payer. Those people were completely ignored. I hear these comments every place I go.
There's no easy fix here.
As a matter of fact, somebody asked me why I don't just say, "Give up on it," yesterday, and I said I probably should, because it's a lost cause.
There's no easy fix here, there's no easy fix.
You and I know that, and that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying you took the easy way out. You decided what you wanted, and you went for it. And I understand that, but I'm saying in public, it doesn't work.
Ma'am, because I'm also thinking long-term. This isn't a year.
Long-term, thirty years.
Well, but you know what, eighteen ninety-six was a heck of a long time ago.
Could we, could we get the, yeah, let's get the people who haven't made comments yet, yes, sir, in the hat, please.
My name's Sean Colley, I'm the chief of ILC two fire department. I know you're going through with the prison, but on behalf of the question, why have none of the fire departments received funding to help us? We've sent letters in asking for funding, we're being pushed into this new radio system where if it wasn't for a grant, we only got a third of the radios that we need to function right, and it costs us over twelve thousand dollars for five portable radios. And we need help, we're begging everybody. Fundraising's down, the expenses are going up, and we can't get help from anybody.
We allocated, don't quote me on this, ooh, shucks, four percent, five percent of the Act thirteen money to go to local fire departments. I'm not sure, I don't think it's been released yet, I know it hasn't, and then, of course, you all are going to have to decide on how you want to spend it, but we did put a measure through, the base stations were provided because of the grant we had gotten a few years back.
The base station.
Right, right. And then, in the Act thirteen monies, we allocated a percentage to go to the fire departments. I don't, I'd have to find out, I can't remember, to be honest with you, sir, all the particulars or the exact percentage, I think it was four or five percent.
Yeah, I was just wondering, we haven't seen any money, I know the township's got money, but they haven't allocated none of it.
Yeah, I mean, we've given, we have four, it's four or five percent, I don't know which one it is.
And I know there's at least, Chief Isbell's here, and I know there's at least three fire departments in Louisiana Township.
And then also, make sure, I spoke with Guy and Roy about two weeks ago, and about, you know, the progress, where we stand on the upgrade of the nine-one-one system. The reason why we did the nine-one-one system is if we did not do it, the parts that we couldn't, I mean, the system.
I know the system was outdated.
Yeah.
The government's forcing everybody, because of the, you know, handling of security, go on digital.
Yeah, that's it.
But your question is, is about the allocation. If it, for argument's sake, say it's four percent, we're going to have to pull that resolution, and is that four percent of the total received, which I don't believe it's four percent of the one-point-two or one-point-three, I think it was four percent after other allocations were already distributed. So that resolution is going to have to be pulled. Second, Controller Lawley, can you confirm whether or not, it's my understanding that both years of Marcella Shell county monies have already been received, is that correct?
I sent in an email now, I don't have the number off the top of my head.
Not the number, but that the checks have been received?
I believe they have been, yes.
Okay, but to my knowledge, no allocations.
It's been released.
Which I don't know why, somebody has to do a reflection.
Yeah, because it's getting rough on us, you know, we're scraping them by.
Well, you'll get that allocation one time, because given, I mean, a vote will have to be taken in a prior meet, in a subsequent meeting, because the fellow commissioners want to use any future Marcella Shell income for paying towards the prison.
Yeah, I know, that's why I was.
So it's only just this one, whatever that resolution was, it'll be there one time.
Well, that's not necessarily factual. I supported the, if I may, I made the breakdown of the allocation of the Act thirteen money and advanced it to our local fire departments, and I will continue to do that.
No, no, what I'm saying is that, that's the only resolution we passed, okay, was for, if it is four percent, for that one particular year, not for the two thousand and eleven, for the two thousand and twelve. It was only for that one particular year. That's the only resolution that this board of commissioners have passed, okay? And if, you know, they've already said that they want to use Marcella Shell money for the prison, so whether it will be the entire amount, or if we will keep some back for other projects, that hasn't yet been determined, and would have to be determined at future meetings.
Yeah, because if they don't, if they don't start helping fire departments soon, and they start shutting down, then you're going to have to look at, you're going to have to go to some pain departments in this place to take care of it.
Also, make sure, keep in communication with Guy and Roy, would they have talked to Motorola, that's the company that's doing the work on the.
Yeah, we all went in on a federal grant together.
Right, 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 that was, LC did that.
Yeah, they were turned down.
Right, I'm aware of all that, because I've been working on that. But also, make sure, we're a good year and a half away from that system being completed, and Motorola, at least they discussed the willingness to engage and try to come up with, let's say, if you purchase them all from Motorola, they will give you kind of a break. I mean, don't go buying anything anytime soon.
Well, we already have, we use our last year's grant money to get five portable.
Because the cost, the cost could be, because what'd you pay, about three, four thousand for each?
Around there, we got five for, it was twelve thousand, nine hundred.
Okay, so the cost, in a couple of years, it may be reduced down to around two thousand, I, so.
The reason why we did it, because we were told, do the, verify, we were told this system was going to be up and running April thirteenth of this year, and that's why we were.
We don't even have the towers up yet.
Well, I'm just saying, that's what we were told.
Yeah.
When we were going through all these meetings for the grant, they told us, April of two thousand and thirteen, the radio system would be out.
Did LC get, did LC get the grant finally?
No, or as we know, last I heard, we were turned down both times.
Now, the radios you bought, were they a door band?
No, we, to save money, we backed it strictly with digital, so they're setting it in a cabin. And that's why we made the commitment last year, so you could just go with strictly the digital radios and save money.
Dan. Are there, thank you, are there any other public comments, yes, Ms. Massey?
I haven't heard what you plan to do with the present jail building, once you build a new prison. What are your plans for that building?
Well, it's obvious that, you know, one of our big plans is, you know, we have to use that facility as a, as a record storage facility, or part of it, I should say, simply because, you know, we're renting, we're renting facilities all, in different areas around the county to store required records. And we can certainly bring all those back and save some money there. And there's another, there's a number of other issues that, you know, we can expand some office space into the facility, you know, you know, that's a, I'm sure, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of opportunities to use that facility for useful space.
Well, that's going to take money, right? Because you're gonna put office buildings, offices in there, that's gonna take money. How much money do you plan on spending on that building, and where's it coming from?
Well, let me add to that. I'm not aware of any monies that are going to other buildings for storage. Where are those? I could be wrong, but-
Yeah, our public search, our Director of Public Works has indicated, to me at least, that there are, they are renting storage spaces.
Where at? We're not renting these rooms.
I don't know exactly where-
Commissioner Zabutowski, you've been here quite as long, but I don't know of it.
I'm not sure if there's any outside rentals.
There is, no, there's, we have, we have, there are none. I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure that we're not renting.
Well, that's an easy solution. We could talk to them and find out.
Yeah, I mean, where our storage spaces are, because I, okay, that's the first.
The question is, that, you know, we do have records away from the county facility itself. And so we need to get those back for security reasons, in addition.
We have them in one of our, we have them at our county federal building that we own, where our offices are. We had PHMC come in, that's another subject, but we're not renting space. And he's, Commissioners Amber Seedy said that we are thinking about record storage, or we are thinking about, like, other offices. There is no "we," because I don't know who he's talking about. That's why we need to have meetings, because I've never heard, even unless it was done in a prison work group meeting, a discussion about the future use of the county jail. And I would think that if it was discussed, since there are no minutes, that if any of the reporters were there, they would have reported on it. And I don't ever recall that. But you are right, and this is why we need to have commissioner discussion, because we are being told that it's not ADA compliant, it could be shut down, okay? Then if you're going to have employees either go over for record storage, or if you're gonna have other office space, then one would think that you would need to renovate that, unless you're gonna put everything in, you know, the storage in the jail cells and other places. So there has not been any commissioner, any three commissioner discussion on that.
I don't think there's been any significant discussion. I mean, I personally have not explored any options outside of, you know, the possibilities of X, Y, and Z. But as Commissioner, the commissioners have alluded to, I mean, there are some options available. And as you alluded to, there'll be some costs associated with that. We haven't got to that point, ma'am.
Well, don't you think that should be part of your overall plan, to build in a new prison? What you're gonna do with that building, how much is it gonna cost the taxpayers to do whatever you're gonna do with the old prison? That should be added into the cost of the new prison.
Well, there's a number of avenues for-
I mean, don't you think that people have a right to know? That you're speaking and spending not only thirty million or whatever, it's gonna cost fifty-eight million for the new prison, plus it's gonna be this much amount to renovate the old prison, and because our plans are to put this in there and that in there. You're being disingenuous with the taxpayers. You're not giving them the true cost of what you're planning to do.
We haven't came to determination on that yet.
We have no definite plans since we haven't voted on it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That should be part, shouldn't that be part of your plan for the prison?
Should be at least part of the discussion. You've heard one commissioner say, "We have discussed," and you heard the other two say, "We haven't." So, yes, it needs to be discussed at a, at a, at a open public meeting for, so that all three commissioners can give options and give ideas, because that's what, that's what we're here for.
First of all, it's a historical building, so we have to be cognizant of it.
And which leads to some potential for historical grants to do some renovation work.
Grants, I think.
Well, there's just too darn much secrecy in this county, darn much secrecy.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
It should be more open.
Mr., is there anybody that hasn't had an opportunity to speak yet?
There's one lady here.
Yes, yes, you. Now, we, to keep in mind, folks, we still have our whole agenda to get to here, so I'm just gonna ask for everybody to be brief, please.
My name is Gigi Patrinen. This is my first ever commissioner's meeting. It's actually my first ever public meeting in this county that I've attended. Unlike a lot of these people here, I've only recently been following this prison issue. I don't have any agenda here to promote. I wanted to speak just within the last fifteen minutes of hearing these public comments, because I'm a little concerned about a couple of issues. I initially attended the public information meeting at Penn State because the information that I was reading in the newspaper and the things that I was hearing from people I spoke with seemed to be conflicting. And I attended the first meeting and came away with a lot more questions than answers. So I attended a second meeting at the American Legion on Route twenty-one. And at that meeting, the format was the same. We were supposed to submit our questions in writing. And Commissioner Amber Seedy would take the questions, and actually, he didn't get much of a chance to choose the ones that he wanted to answer, because unfortunately, I was the one who spoke out when I wasn't supposed to, because I felt that there was some misinformation being given. I don't know who understands why, who doesn't, but the format of the meeting changed because of that. And people who were there, there were only about twelve or fifteen from the public. But the good side of that was that it turned into a very nice atmosphere of public and official interchange of information, exchange of information. As far as I know, there were no guards there, armed or otherwise. And that's one of the things that I want to address today. The issue of armed guards being necessary, the term I read in the newspaper was that they were necessary because of circus-type atmosphere. The only circus-type atmosphere I've seen here today was, I'm sorry to say so, Commissioner Zabutowski, but was your outburst.
That's okay, ma'am.
I was appalled by that. And Chairman Amber Seedy, for you to try to ask a citizen to be quiet, and for this sheriff gentleman here to turn around and look at the person who's speaking and sort of indicate that they should be quiet, but for you not to address Commissioner Zabutowski during his outburst, I think was very inappropriate.
Can I apologize for that?
Well, it's okay.
No, no, we don't apologize.
You don't need to apologize, but you did it, and that's the point.
No, that's, that's fine.
And so that brings me to the other issue. I'm an apolitical person, okay? If I could register independent, I would do that, but they won't let me do that and vote in the primary. So I have no interest in who's Democrat or who's Republican here. Apparently, that's a problem among the three commissioners. There's also, very clearly to me, a personality problem going on. You all have to work that out, because you're all here to work for us. If you have some personality conflicts, or you have differences of opinion on things, your differences of opinion are what's supposed to work for us, the taxpayers. They're not supposed to resolve in snide comments about one another, either publicly or privately. They're not supposed to resolve in nasty arguments. And it's clear to us here today, or at least to me, I can always speak for myself personally, it's clear to me that you have some issues going on that don't involve the prison or any of the other public matters. You guys need to get past that and work on the taxpayer issues and the prison issues and whatever other subjects are before you as commissioners. All three of you. I'm not picking out anybody. You two gentlemen, I met after the meeting-
This isn't exactly an agenda item, so could I actually conclude?
Yes. I'm telling you my experience in the public information meetings about the prison, and the prison resolution is an issue today. So I'm telling you my experience, okay? I would just like to get accurate information in a professional and direct manner. So that's my point.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am.
And if I may, my comment was based on the fact that there was a statement in regard to a violation of the Sunshine Act. And subsequently, I made reference to a legal matter that had hung over my head for the past three years. One that cited me in violation of someone's civil rights. Something that I hold very, very sacred. And to have, and I was exonerated for the record, and I'd be more than delighted to provide copies of the court's opinion on that case, which clearly shows that it had no merit. And for that to be raised, I just wanted to make a point that in no way, shape, or form did I violate, breach the Sunshine Act. That, I may have done it in a very passionate manner, but nevertheless, the bottom line is, in no way would I violate the law, or in no way would I violate someone's civil or constitutional rights. That was my point, and I do apologize for the manner in which I presented that.
Is there a gentleman that would like to make some comments that is in connection with the Oak Grove Cemetery?
Yes.
Yeah, please, sir.
My name is Frank Picaro. I'm a member of the Oak Grove Union Cemetery Board. And I'm here to request the forgiveness of tax indebtedness, including interest and penalties for the past president and future of the cemetery. Excuse me. It is my understanding that prior to making this request, we were obligated to get a similar grant from the South Union Township and the Laurel Highlands School District. And we did in fact have this, and I have copies of their letters, if you would like to see them. Wherein they stated that we were granted forgiveness. And simply based on those two letters and the requirement that we had those, that relief from taxes, our mask-wind of the county would follow suit and give us, give the cemetery a complete tax forgiveness.
First of all, sir, I want to commend the other two taxing bodies for taking those actions as a positive. And we do have that on our agenda to debate to vote for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, in fact.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Sandra Morris. I'm the Executive Director at the Fayette County Association for the Blind. And this is Becky Camp. She's a citizen of Fayette County who just happens to be blind. On the agenda this morning is two proclamations, one for Blinest Awareness Month for October, and one for White Cane Safety Day. And I wanted to personally thank the commissioners for allowing this and making these proclamations for us. I had planned to stay for the whole meeting, but unfortunately, we are going to have to leave, so I apologize. We would like to get a photo opportunity at some point in time with the commissioners for the proclamations, but we do need to get some things ready. We will be in Stories Square this afternoon from one to three, passing out awareness information, so we invite the commissioners and anyone else who's interested in stopping by Stories Square to get the information.
If you have a few minutes, without objection, we can do it right now.
And then we'll return.
Can you hold up one second?
Thank you very much.
I'll read the Blinest Awareness Month, October two thousand thirteen. Whereas more than two-thirds of visually impaired adults in the United States are over sixty-five years of age, and the prevalence of blindness increases rapidly in later years, particularly after the age of seventy-five. Whereas nearly twenty and a half million Americans aged forty and older are afflicted with cataracts, which is a leading cause of blindness in the United States. Whereas the number of Americans with age-related eye diseases is expected to double within the next three decades, according to Eye Care America, which is the public service foundation of the American Academy of Ophthalmology and got that word. Whereas approximately thirty-seven million people are blind, and one hundred twenty-four million severely visually impaired worldwide. And it is estimated that a child goes blind every minute. And whereas the World Health Organization estimates seventy-five percent of all blindness can be treated, cured, or prevented by highly cost-effective means. Therefore, in recognition of the need to educate citizens about the prevention and treatment of blindness, the Board of Fayette County Commissioners do hereby proclaim October two thousand thirteen as Blinest Awareness Month in the county of Fayette. I encourage the citizens of this county to take the necessary precautions to prevent the causes of blindness and assist those who are affected by it. Signed by the Board of County Commissioners of Fayette County. Thank you.
White Cane Safety Day, October fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. Whereas it is important all Fayette County residents have the opportunity to live active, independent lives by supporting initiatives that promote safe mobility. We can help residents who are blind or visually impaired to gain independence and realize their dreams. For Fayette County residents who are blind or visually impaired, the White Cane is an important tool for self-reliance, full participation, and inclusion in our society. The use of White Cane, dog guides, and public and private transportation programs ensures that Fayette County residents who are blind or visually impaired can travel efficiently and safely, breaking down barriers to success and independence. In nineteen sixty-four, Congress passed a resolution allowing former President Lyndon Johnson to proclaim October fifteenth as White Cane Safety Day. We in Fayette County are also, also recognize this day as a time to promote the independence of residents who are blind or visually impaired, and to increase public awareness of mobility and safety issues concerning people with visual impairments. Therefore, the Fayette County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, to be White Cane Safety Day in the county of Fayette. At this time, we urge all residents to promote the safety and well-being of their fellow Fayette County residents who are blind or visually impaired.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and your patience as well.
Thank you. I'm very sorry, I forgot to mention that Becky is actually our computer training instructor at the Blind Association.
Oh, welcome.
So, the Blind Association, we're working to employ people in Fayette County. I just, if I might just take a minute to say that. So, and we're working hard to get blind people in Fayette County jobs. So that's what we do. You'll see us out, fundraising, fundraising, fundraising. So, thank you for your time.
And if you see anyone with one of these bands on, this is Blinest Awareness Month, and this is part of the information we'll be passing out this afternoon at Stories Square. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have two, I think, two other proclamations, or are they captured?
International Business Wellness Week and Domestic Wellness.
National Business Professional Women's?
Yeah, let's do the Denise. The Professional Business Women can step up, if you'd like to read this, Commissioner.
Whereas working women constitute 72 million, or almost half of the nation's workforce, and strive to serve their communities, their states, and their nation in professional, civic, and cultural capacities. And whereas women-owned businesses account for 30% of all United States businesses, generating 1.9 trillion in sales and employing 9.2 million people. Whereas working women should be applauded for their contributions to the workplace and the financial stability of their families, especially during the economic downturn, when more women have become their family's breadwinner. Whereas the major goal of the Business and Professional Women's Foundation is to promote equity for all women, and to help create better conditions for working women through the study and advocacy of social, educational, and economic issues impacting women in the workplace. Since 1928, National Business Women's Week has honored the contributions of working women and employers who support working women and their families. Therefore, be resolved that the Fayette County Commissioners hereby proclaim October 20th to the 26th as National Business Women's Work Week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very, very nice.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you.
Yeah, would you like to say anything?
We would like to thank the commissioners for their continued support. It's been a lot of years we've been here, and we have a local in Conneville, Pam is the vice president, and a local in Mason Town, Debbie Damacy is president. And our Union Town president had to leave, she had to go back to work, but her name's Kathy Cohen. And we appreciate the continued support of the commissioners. And Angela is a member of Union Town Conneville. We could get you a member of Mason Town too. And Vince, we need you to pay your dues, but you're. So, thank you very much, thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah, Ray has been here many times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the last proclamation is the domestic violence.
Is there anyone here from domestic violence?
Whereas domestic violence disrupts community, destroys relationships, and harms hundreds of thousands of Americans each year. And whereas domestic violence crosses all social, racial, religious, ethnic, and economic backgrounds. And whereas a woman is battered every 15 seconds in this country. And whereas last year, domestic violence theft left 166 empty places at tables across Pennsylvania. Whereas last year, Domestic Violence Services of Southwestern Pennsylvania received 2,119 domestic violence-related hotline calls. And whereas last year, Domestic Violence Services of Southwestern Pennsylvania provided domestic violence-related services to a total of 2,530 new victims, children, and significant others. Whereas last year, Domestic Violence Services of Southwestern Pennsylvania provided 8,436 nights of safe shelter to 644 victims of domestic violence and their children. Last year, Domestic Violence Services of Southwestern PA provided a total of 15,834 and a quarter hours of counseling to victims, children, and significant others. Now therefore, be resolved by the Fayette County Board of Commissioners thus hereby proclaim October 2013 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month of Fayette County. We encourage all county residents to raise their awareness about domestic violence, and increase efforts to transform despair into hope for families who suffer violence at their home. Signed by the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Okay, before we continue with the meeting, is there? Mr. McKinnon, I'd just like to ask anybody who has not spoken yet if they have any comments. Otherwise, Mr. McKinnon.
Thank you, may I speak from the chair, I'll speak up so you can hear me. I just have to address this mentioned that the Crabtree Study shows it much more expensive to rehab the current jail. And if you read it in the paper, it'll tell you, you haven't seen it yet, but the big reason for that, he's projecting some 90,000 feet to add on to it. And our plans only say we can do it 30,000. The further he throws in $2.5 million into that number to build a parking garage. We've got two parking garages going begging down here for people to park in them, and they're within walking distance of the courthouse. So, just to address that, read it, and I think you'll find that's answered in there. But I'm going to leave you my business card, and if you've read that.
Well, one of the reasons why he increases the space size is one of the deficiencies in the study is where our space for the inmates is too small. That's one of the reasons why he increases the size. I believe that is the case.
Well, if you read the numbers he puts out, he's adding 4,000 square feet to the old jail rehabbing, so we've even given, if you read the study, we've given 4,000 square feet into new. I don't know how that fits in because he didn't actually say, but we're proposing a way to get 476 beds, and then we're four short of 480, but we're proposing you a way to get it done for half the price. Please look at it, study it, and anybody from this group who decides to meet with you at any time, I'll leave you my business cards, to talk about those numbers, and that's what, that's all we're asking you to do. Let's look at the other responsibility that never got brought to daylight.
Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Okay, if there's no other further public comments this time, yes?
Mind me, very brief. I will commend the commissioners for doing what they did today. All the ideas be vetted out. I really like this idea he's proposing. I suggest, you know, when I look at God's Word, God's Word tells me, "If any of ye lack wisdom, then ye ask of God, that giveth all men liberally, and braitheth not, and it shall be given him." I believe God has some wisdom for you to look through all of this and come up with a good solution. And I would be praying that a good solution does come through this.
I certainly appreciate that, and that's good. There's no other comments, we'll continue with our meeting.
I'll move to accept the four proclamations.
Sir, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, under Assessment Office, consider approving the following for real estate tax exemption that have been deemed 100% disabled veterans by the Veterans Administration of Pennsylvania effective for the 2014 tax year. Mark A. Humble of Union Town and Charles R. Stickel of Union Town.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Consider approval for William Lucas to attend a continuing education class at the Assessors Association of Pennsylvania Fall Conference in State College PA, November 8, 2013.
Move.
At a cost of $90, second?
All those in favor? Motion carries.
May I interrupt? Sir, are you, I'm the one for Oak?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't recall your name.
Frank DeCarlo.
DeCarlo. Are you here to see the result of the vote, and then would you? All what I'm asking is, we could move this up so that you could.
Well, you would, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, if there's no objection, that would be under the Commissioners, number 15.
Okay, with no objections, consider approving the exoneration of back taxes, interest, and cost for Oak Grove Cemetery and South Union Township in the amount of $877.76.
Move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will give that information upstairs to our Tax Assessment Office. You're welcome.
Number six, behavioral health. Consider approving agreements and modifications. The three agreements are modifications between Fayette County Resources for a contract value of $441,601 from July 1st through June 30th of 2013.
I'll make the motion to accept the agreements and modifications as listed on the agenda.
You're including?
The base contract, it will.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item seven, children and youth services. Consider ratifying a fiscal year 2012-2013 purchase of service agreements between the County of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services and Try Again Homes Incorporated in Washington PA, for rates as follows.
I'll make a motion to accept the ratification of Try Again Homes as listed on the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval of a fiscal year 2013-2014 purchase of service agreements between the County of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services, Fayette County Juvenile Probation, and Preventative Care Incorporated of George Junior Republic in Grove City for the attached rates.
Move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Consider accepting the resignation of newly appointed Fayette County Children and Youth Services Advisory Board Member, Kate Thompson, effective September 30th, 2013. The advisory committee voted unanimously to accept Kate's resignation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item eight, control of financial condition of the county.
Commissioners, for your approval dated the 15th of October 2013, in our United Bank checking account cash balance, we have $7,694,810.32. Funds that are owed to our general fund is listed on the sheet. Total of $1,456,616.95. Our payments that are due as listed, $234,171.17. Central service payments as listed, $78,686. Funds that we owe in the form of a tax anticipation note is $5 million. The budget year net position is $4,464,284.44. Total 2013 revenues, $24,475,260.64. Total 2013 expenditures, $20,636,089.15. Total 2012 expenditures that are being paid this fiscal year are $3,287,640.10. In our capital reserve fund balance, it is $61,863.44. In our bond fund balance, there's $209,050.18.
Thank you, DeCarlo. Item nine, courts. Consider approval of a contract with Bernard Lipak for the new Magisterial District Court 14-3-04. Court has approved the building plans.
Move.
Second, all those in favor?
Hold on one second, please. This is for the lease agreement? We're sure we did not do that, because I know we had approved building plans. I would have thought we approved the lease agreement. But what's, that was the only proposal. Okay, what's the term, what's the term of the lease and the amount of the lease agreement?
Six-year term, $1,700 a month, not to increase further.
Okay, so it's to approve the lease agreement, a six-year lease agreement at $1,700 a month, and the rent remains the same during the first term of the lease, which would be six years?
Yes.
That's the term of the magistrate's election.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 10, Human Resources Department, under the Bridge Department, consider ratifying the resignation of Bridge Worker Two, Sean Cunningham, effective September 25, 2013.
Move.
Second.
Because the next section is.
All those in favor?
Rather, there's no name, I mean, there's.
We got to pass this one.
Oh, wait a minute, we do have a. Under CYS.
No, 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 we still have to pass the.
All the Bridge Department?
Yeah, we got a motion, the second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Under CYS, consider approving the hire of Christina Cook as caseworker one at $15.12 an hour, effective October 21, 2013.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the hire of Jolene Wills Bauer as caseworker one at $15.12 an hour, effective October 21.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consider approving the hire of Gina Adamovich as a caseworker one at $15.12 per hour, effective October 21.
Move.
Second.
Consider approving the hire of Mariah Riddle, Riddle, as caseworker one, $15.12 per hour, effective October 21.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And consider approval of the hire of Ronald Colbert III as caseworker one at $15.12 an hour, effective October 28.
Move.
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yes, we did.
Or, I mean, you didn't call for the, you made a motion in the second, or was it?
Which one?
Yeah, we did do it on the Adamovich one. You voted, did.
Okay, all, was it, who said that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, under Information Technology, consider approving the hire of Matthew King as a part-time IT assistant, 9:15 an hour, effective October 21, 13.
Move.
This is on this revised copy.
My revised copy needs revised. Okay, where are we at? My IT's down here. I'm at the emergency management.
Yeah, this, this one is going to be, this is not, this is.
Okay, hold on one sec. Okay, I'm second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Tax Assessment, kind of jumping around here a little bit, but I want to take this. Consider approving the hire of Kelly Flynn as an assessor, one, at SEIU Paygrade 11 Step A, for 1308 an hour, effective October 28, 2013.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Emergency Management Agency, consider ratifying the resignation of 9/11 dispatcher attorney Craig Lindsay, effective September 8, 2013.
Move. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Human Resources, consider approving the amendment of the Resolution 13-05-23-15 regarding non-union employee healthcare contribution equity adjustments and 2013 wellness program incentives to two-state instead of waiving shall be reimbursed in the first pay of December.
Make a motion.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the 2014 non-union employee wellness program incentive structure to be effective January 1st, 2014.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the non-union employee health insurance contribution and structure to be effective January 1st, 2014.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the non-union employee health insurance waiver structure to be effective January 1st, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the 240-hour volunteer internship of California University of Communications and Leadership student Bethany Phrazie, effective January 6th, 2014.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving an agreement with Wright Aid to, to provide onsite flu shots at a cost of $21 per shot.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under planning and zoning, consider accepting the resignation due to retirement of zoning officer Lloyd Iker, effective December 6th, 2013.
Move.
Second.
Under the prison, consider approving...
You can vote.
Pardon? Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider, under the prison, consider approving the 450-hour volunteer internship of Penn State Criminology major Alex Fogel, effective October 15th, 2013.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider ratifying the resignations of accounts clerk three, Beth Patton, and assessor three, Kevin McCursor, effective October 4th, 2013.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under planning and zoning, consider ratification of a contract to La Rico Construction Company for repairing Cool Spring Neben Road Bridge number seven along Turkey Foot Road in North Union Township Fayette County for $39,609.27. Fayette County Bridge Department will provide construction inspection services.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider renewing annual agreements with the following third-party agency for UCC inspection. This would be the October 30th renewal for the, for Still City Inspection Agency of Pittsburgh, Middle Atlantic Inspection Agency of Sycamore, Pennsylvania, K2 Engineering of Union Town and Accredited Services Incorporated of Wayne's Borough, PA.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider entering into an agreement with North Union Township for the county to issue the UCC building permit for a new office building project to be located at the University Park parcel ID number 25-12-01-23-03. Due to a conflict of interest, this, this is, this agreement is only for said project, includes permit, insurance from the county, all necessary inspections, and issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12, consider ratification of agreements with Bedford, Butler, and Green County to house Fayette County inmates.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under public works, consider advertising for 2014 janitorial supplies, one-year contracts for courthouse, public service building, federal building, and bridge department.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider advertising for 2014 summer slash winter tires and repair services for county-owned lease vehicles to include adult probation, assessment, behavioral health, bridge department, buildings and grounds, children and youth, former district attorney, domestic probation, EMA, FEMA hazmat fact, juvenile probation, planning, zoning, UCC, prison chair, SPCA, and veterans administration.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider advertising for gasoline and diesel fuel for years 2014, 15, 16, and 17, and 18, five-year contract off of the OPIS pricing index.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider revoking the balance of grass-cutting park maintenance contract awarded to Goodwill SWPA under resolution 13-06-18-31, effective October 15th.
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under tax claim, consider accepting the following bids from the October 1st, 2013 repository sale bid opening, subject to all conditions being met.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Just to add on this, I don't believe you said that is listed...
As listed.
On the agenda for those high bidding.
Consider placing the properties not sold at the Fayette County free and clear sale in the name of Fayette County. Now, on this, in this to, for us not to put those names, we'll, we'll have to vote no.
Yeah.
So, is there...
I make, I make the motion.
To vote no?
No, we don't do that.
Make the motion.
Make the motion to...
If you move to accept it as a proposal, then everybody votes no and gets defeated.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this was kind of a interesting way we wrote this, but...
Perhaps a, a better way would be to, to make a motion that's contrary to the, the item that's on the agenda, in other words, move that we...
Motion reject.
Yeah, that we, that we modify the policy of putting the...
There is no policy. It was just done years and years ago.
Yeah.
We have to be very clear, and if that means, if that means presenting a motion and, and clarinet up, let's do that, so that tax claim, citizens, and no one else has any, any issues. You remember, we asked you to come up with that.
Yeah, that was, that was what we talked about last week.
So, I make a motion to reject. And that's what we want to do, right? We want to vote, I make a motion to...
That we reject putting the properties in Fayette County's name as a result of the free and clear sales.
Why don't we just, just make it clear and say that you move that we do not place the properties in the name of Fayette County.
Then I make a motion that we do not place the names of the properties in Fayette County.
And keep them in the...
Owner's name.
In the, in the record property owner's name.
Yes, that's the motion.
Does it need to have any indication of the sale name? So that there's no questions?
Everything...
Effectively immediately.
Effectively immediately.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do you, do you, do you both have that written down very clearly? Could you read it back, please? Someone?
Commissioners, I've tasked you with a mission to not put the properties in Fayette County's name, to keep in the name of the record property owner. The property is not sold at the county free and clear sales, effective immediately.
Thank you.
Under commissioners, I'll read the amended items first. Considering motion to ratify the hiring of attorney Thomas Pelles from the Meyer Darrell Law Firm to represent Judge Warman and Judge Solomon in the Mancinsky case.
Solicitor Berkley, sorry, I was thinking of Pelles. Could you give, give us all some background and some information on that?
Well, as I think all commissioners know, Mr. Mancinsky convicted back in the 80s, homicide, at a time when Judges Solomon and Warman, district attorneys, assistant district attorneys, ultimately has had his convictions overturned. Mr. Mancinsky, through counsel, has filed suit in the Western District of Pennsylvania Federal Court in Pittsburgh. Judges Solomon and Warman, being two of the defendants, have requested pursuant to Pennsylvania law that Fayette County provide them representation. Under the law, as I have sent to all three county commissioners, section, I think, 42 PA, maybe 457, but I might be wrong on that, it's 57 to 58, the county has the obligation of providing representation, and actually, the second section 58, I believe it is, obligates the county to indemnify, even though the county in this case is not a defendant. So, counsel needed to be changed. PCORP, the county's president, sure, has denied coverage in this because of this cause of action date to the 80s, and they do not insure the county. My understanding was the county was self-insured for these matters at that time, and therefore, and counsel needed to be engaged to represent the two judges in question. Yeah, I mean, there's a whole lot of other issues that go with it. As I explained to you in your office, I do believe after reading Judge Chacon's opinion in this case that was filed in 2005 or 2006, the same plaintiff, that there is some argument that district attorneys in the performance of their duties as prosecutors can actually be considered state employees. I talked to the Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office, Greg Newhauser, chief of the Civil Division. He says, no, they're not going to be covering. They reject that. That doesn't mean that it's over, but it did mean that counsel, I had asked them to represent the judges Solomon and Warman. They would not do that. The complaint on the two judges was served, I forget what date, early September, a decision had to be made. There were a couple of names tossed around. It was my recommendation that Mr. Pelles, who has approximately 25 years' experience in representing defendants in these kinds of cases, in particular, has represented district attorneys. There are issues of immunity, et cetera, but I think that's about as much as...
Okay, so just in a nutshell, the county is not a party to the action as of date.
That is correct.
Parties to the action are Judge Solomon, and Judge Warman, and other individuals.
Correct. Another district attorney, former assistant, Mr. Cobus, and the estate of a state police officer that was involved in the prosecution.
And this resolution is to ratify, to ratify a decision that had already been made to retain Paul Pelles, only to represent Warman and Solomon.
At this time, that is correct.
At this time, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the reason that PCORP is not providing coverage to the county is because at the time that the alleged actions occurred, the county of Fayette was not insured by PCORP. We were not members of that poll of insurers.
That's correct.
Okay, so the only other question then is, well, the decision's already been made. I didn't know that, how many other lawyers or law firms that you had reviewed, but apparently you reviewed, you selected this one out of a few others.
I recommended it.
Recommended it, okay.
I didn't select them.
Well, someone did because we're ratifying it.
Well, I recommended to, I talked to Commissioner Ambrosini because I had numerous conversations with Judges Solomon and Warman and staff that the county was not acting in time to get this on record, which an enlargement of time was actually requested and granted before the date for the answer to...
Okay, so you, you got at least two commissioners. I, I received a copy of an email just from Commissioner Ambrosini that informed Judge Waver and Solomon that you had selected that individual. Okay, so this is ratifying that decision, I understand that. What is, so thank you, what is the, how is this being paid? Out of, out of what funds? It's not, it's not covered under any insurance, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so the county has, is obligated to pay the attorney, Mr. Pelles, and, and all other associated costs that are deemed...
Deemed necessary for legal representation in this case, so long as it is determined that at the time of these actions, they were acting in the scope of their employment as district attorneys.
Okay, so what the commissioners need to do in addition to this, okay, we're going to have, we need to enter into an agreement, obviously. How much are we paying Mr. Pelles? Is it an hourly rate or, or what?
I believe it is an hourly rate. I think, I didn't see anything, even though you were, you used the word, I selected, I did not select.
Okay, you recommended, you recommended.
I recommended, and it was my understanding, because I asked Mr. Pelles when I was deciding to recommend him, and I think he told me his hourly rate for this representation would be $175 per hour.
$175 per hour, okay.
Now, the, the firm, as I imagine commissioners generally knows, has other associates, paralegals, et cetera, and I think they're, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, well, someone needs to just tell us, what are we, what's the...
I think we have a wage sheets from...
Do we have that?
My question, my question...
Do we have that?
My question is...
Commissioners, I've asked you, could you just wait one second?
Sure, we can.
Can we, if we're, if we are going to ratify decisions as well, then we need to know what the hourly rate is, so I need to know from someone sitting here what that hourly rate is.
His hourly rate as represented to me was $175...
So, that's what's going to be in the agreement?
Per hour, that will be in the agreement.
$170, okay.
There's a sheet for, for other, you know, associated costs.
Which is lower rates, okay?
They're all lower rates, that's correct.
Okay, and then we...
Associate costs, less than paralegal income.
Okay, and then we will also need to determine, this board of commissioners, where we are going to obtain that money from. We have a budget, a general fund budget already designated for the year 2013, and for the year 2014 budget purposes, where we will need to place monies aside, so we all need to be cognizant of that. For any bills that are invoiced for the year 2013, if we don't have an agreement with attorney Pelles and that law firm for them to wait until 2014, when we have the money set aside, I don't know what any agreement was, then, then we need to decide, we as a group here needs to direct the controller's office as to where to get that money from, because we don't have a designated, obviously, okay? So, that, that's going to have to be done by, by resolution, at least next month, okay? That's all I have.
Sadly, we've been, we've been budgeting off and on years, would you not agree, Commissioner? Monies under the Mancinsky item. I would hope that we would press the issue that the two individuals... I would hope that we would press the issue that the two individuals were acting as agents of the state and press the state as hard as we can regarding that, because the case, as was mentioned, it was not Fayette County v. Machinsky, it was the Commonwealth v. Machinsky, and it's my understanding that the district attorney is, if you look at the tree, is a branch off of the Attorney General, is he, is it not?
Yeah, in point of fact, without making this meeting any longer, in a part of the minds for the county, sometimes for the state, when they're in their prosecution role, they are employees of the state. The problem, I mean, and these are things that, you know, may be executive session too, but, but just for the principle of law, the problem is, is that 57, 85-57 says that you have to, the county has to engage representation for them. 58 says, you have to indemnify them. So even if they do, you know, so there's, there's a whole host of problems. Obviously, something had to be done right away, and you have to ratify.
Okay, and, and is there, is there, in your opinion, is there any action that the county can take that has not already been taken or continue to take to try to have another entity such as the Commonwealth, you know, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, take over this defensive litigation? We just need to know, or we, so I don't want the public or me to be hanging out there thinking, oh, well, we're still arguing this point, maybe we won't have to pay the $175 plus any judgment.
I think we're gonna continue to argue that, yes.
Okay, and who do we argue that with?
With the Attorney General's Office.
Okay, and when you say "we," that you and/or Solicitor Kopp is doing it?
Well, Mr. Kupp can't be involved in this.
He can't do that, okay?
Myself, you know, there may be things that develop in this defense by Mr. Pellis from Meyer Dara that will advance that. At this point in time, I cannot.
Okay, but we are still.
But I don't think it's, it is not an issue that we have given up on and will not give up on.
And the second, the last part of that is, so it's clear, it's not just the $175, not just the attorney fees, but as of today, if there is any judgment or settlement, then that also is from the county, county insured, correct?
Statutorily, the county is required to indemnify any judge that would be.
Okay, indemnify is a word that.
Means that you pay for it.
I want, it has to be clear, okay?
Means that the county pays for it.
All right, I'll move to ratify the hiring of Attorney Pellis. Well, it's actually the law firm, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's the law firm of Meyer Dara.
Okay, I.
Butler Bebenekinak.
I move to ratify the retaining of the law firm of Meyer Dara, law firm, to represent Judge Mormon and Judge Solomon in the Machinsky case filed at the Western District level.
Right. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to waive the timing for the Laurel Highlands Visitors Bureau for consideration of a demolition grant in regard to the Cobblestone Hotel Project in the city of Conneville.
I don't have any information on that, so tell me what this is about.
This is about a hotel project in the city of Conneville that the city is pursuing and...
What's it have to do with, like, the Laurel Highlands Visitors Bureau?
They, I spoke with, well, I've been working on this hotel project for the last two years and pleased that we've got to a point now where there actually is somebody who is looking to build. I spoke with the potential developer and one of the site locations is the bottling plant, and that would need to be demolished, and they were asking for some fund assistance, assistance, obviously them being a non, a for-profit would not be eligible, thus it would have to run through the redevelopment authorities' hands. I mean, it's a.
No, the Laurel Highlands Visitors Bureau is the one we're on. What's, what does this project, what does this have to do with the Laurel Highlands Visitors Bureau? That's the.
Because it's, it would be hotel tax grant money.
Oh, okay, so, okay, so this, this motion is to waive the grant timing, meaning the application?
Yeah, usually we, we grant the money in, what is it, April of every year, because of the need to want to start progress, to start movement on the project earlier, this would be to waive the, the timing, waive, you know, the grant award time and allow them to apply at an earlier, earlier date.
To apply for hotel tax grant money, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and who, who's the applicant?
The applicant would be the Conneville Redevelopment Authority.
And that, those monies would be used to demolish a building?
That is correct. It would then.
If, if, okay, so this here is just waiving the grant application period, and then the hotel tax grant board would make a determination?
That, yeah, the board would make the determination, yes. It's a good project, Conneville needs a hotel, the location of it fits well within the, the benefits of the trail program.
Is, is the, I understand all of that, and I don't have a problem with that. The, the hotel tax can be used for demolition of properties?
As long as it's used for tourism benefits, obviously hotels qualify for that.
Yeah.
I don't have any information, I'm a little, I'm hesitant, so I see somebody writing on that, but, go ahead.
I mean, it's.
I'm not.
Did you make a motion?
I made, I made a motion, yes.
Second, all those in favor? I, motion carries.
I'll have to abstain, lack of information.
Consider.
It's a good project, but this is to have hotel tax and go through that process, so that's the only.
Again, the final, the final determination would be the hotel, the board.
Consider, all those in favor? I, motion carries. Consider a motion to have the Conneville Redevelopment Authority administer the demolition grant for the Cobblestone Hotel Project in the city of Conneville.
Technically, this motion is, the Conneville Redevelopment Authority is a 501. They have the ability to apply. I mean, I'll make the motion.
Why are we, I mean, if they haven't approved, why, why, why is it that the commissioners are giving approval for an authority who can apply on its own? I don't, I don't understand why we're.
It's scheduled, isn't it? You gotta move up the schedule, get that, that's what's.
Well, that was the first motion.
There's no, I mean, there's, there's nothing for us to do here. If, if the authority wants to apply, then the authority can apply. We don't have any, I don't have anything that, that says that we would have to direct them to, to apply.
I think this primarily is a, is a request from the Laurel Highlands Visitors Bureau to, for us to approve or allow the Conneville Redevelopment Authority, because we can't use the Fayette County Redevelopment Authority because of logistical issues.
If it's procedural, I'll support it under procedural motion. If that's the request.
Is that your motion?
Yeah. I mean, again, I'm not going to, if this is something the LHBP has requested procedurally, then I'll acknowledge that and make the motion.
You don't have anything from them?
Okay, second, all those in favor?
Stain.
My motion carries.
If Conneville desperately wanted to.
Consider a motion to amend the lease between the Fayette County Commissioners and the Fayette County Agricultural Improvement Association to account for construction of a new county jail located on parcel 09-31-E or 049.
Move to table.
Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? Motion dies for lack of second.
Motion to approve that the request to amend the lease.
Second, all those in favor?
And what's, what's the amendments of the lease? It's to amend the lease, but what, what is it?
To account for construction of a new county jail located on parcel 09-31-0049.
What, what would be amended in the lease? What provisions of the lease would be amended? Because the motion, the motion on the floor is to amend the lease, what, amend what portion? Either Solicitor, if you.
That would be the Solicitor's responsibility.
Well, I don't think that, I think it would just, as the motion reads, that it would be something in the lease that would permit and allow the construction of the new county prison on the parcel presently rented, which is the fair grounds.
We don't, this would, if this is passed, it's just a one-sided, because you have to have another party.
What says, it says between these two entities.
Well, I'm sorry. What did you say? It would authorize, you know what?
Would authorize the negotiation to use one of your.
Right, right, so that's, so that's what it should say, is that, that, you know, authorize the, go ahead. There's a motion and a second.
All those in favor? I, motion carries.
That's why you need.
Under item 15, under commissioners, consider, well, we did that, the first one, consider approval to accept the county prison board's recommendation to move forward with the construction of the new county jail.
Move to table.
Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? Motion dies for lack of second.
Make a motion to approve the prison board's recommendation to move forward with the construction of a new county jail.
Second, all those in favor?
Nay.
I, motion carries. Consider selecting 20 to 30 acres of county property at parcel 09-31-0049 in Dunbar Township as the site of the new county jail.
Move to table. Can't select the sites if we haven't negotiated a lease.
Is there a second?
It's part of the discussion.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion dies for lack of second.
Make the motion to approve.
Second, all those in favor?
Nay.
I, motion carries. Consider approval to begin the process of rezoning 20, 30 acres on parcel 09-31-0049.
You said rezoning.
Yeah, consider beginning the process of subdividing parcels 09-31-0049 at Dunbar Township for the new site of county jail.
And the process, excuse me, the process, so that we're very clear, instead of just select, begin processes, because then nobody knows what that means, this is authorizing the, the county of Fayette to apply, to petition for a subdivision? Is that not, is that not the, for step?
That's what we're saying.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, all those in favor?
Nay.
I, motion carries. Consider approval to rezonate 20, 30 acres on parcel 09-31-0049 at the Dunbar Township property for the new county jail from A1 to M1.
So this is, then, if the, if the subdivision is approved, because you have to go through meetings, then, and, and that has to be approved first, then is this to petition the county of Fayette to file an application for rezoning? Is that what that is, which was coming before us?
Yes.
Yeah, we would have to rezonate the property from A1 to M1. Make the motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Nay.
I, motion carries. Consider, excuse me, consider selecting Crabtree, Robo, and Associates for Architectural Engineering for the renovation alteration, alteration to an existing building for a temporary women's county detention annex.
What's the amount of, what's, what's the fee? And what's the, the site location?
The site location is the Iowa Street property owned by Mr. Newbauer.
Okay, and what is the amount? What's the fee?
The amount, according to the, to the request is, I think it was 7% of the project cost.
7% of, 7% of the total.
Project cost.
And what are, what's the estimated project cost?
It's probably gonna be in the neighborhood of $100,000.
Okay, so that is not, so, so 7% of, not to exceed $100,000, is that what you're saying? Because if it's, you have to be specific.
About 7% of the project cost.
And what, and the project cost being?
We won't know that until we put out an RFP to a contractor. These are, these are only for architectural services.
How can you spend money when you don't know how much you're spending? I know, but that, why don't you just give the key to the car and go?
Ma'am, please.
Make the motion.
All those in, second, all those in favor?
Nay.
I, motion carries.
The, there is no, hold on one second. This is for the Iowa Street? There's no, there's no agreement between the county and Steve Newbauer to lease this But, but you just entered into an RFP to, for architectural services and you, but there's no lease agreement.
Yeah, has Mr. Newbauer, has he, has he proposed a lease agreement for the Iowa Street project?
He's, he's working on a proposal for us.
There's, you can't pass it out. You can't do that.
Well, the, you know, the fact is that depending on what renovations will be necessary for the building, you know, I think that, you know, we wanna, we wanna give Mr. Newbauer the ability to know what renovations are gonna be made for us to negotiate a sum. I mean, that's just, that's just common sense.
It's not, it's certainly, this. Steve, Mr. Newbauer sent a letter, he did, he did send a letter that says he's interested in leasing, but prior to that, one of the architectural team leader, as, as some of you know, came here and said that he looked at, there were three, there were three or four sites and suggested the Iowa Street. That's all, that's all that had occurred. Other than a bid was sent, a bid, an advertised request for proposal for a women's facility in, as it stated, close proximity of Uniontown, which is, which is, which is wise, but it also said one story, which eliminated all the many two-story buildings or three-story buildings in Uniontown. So when you make a, when you advertise a bid in a scope of work and you only limited the one story, you've just eliminated many others. Well, we did have one individual who did respond back, and the bid was rejected, which that also has to be addressed here. It was rejected because it was a two-story building. And, and that's one of the things, there was no discussion with the commissioners and who have the authority to do this, and no one else does, on what the specs for buildings should be. So regardless of that, I can't do anything about that now, but most certainly, I don't see how we are. see how we are awarding an RFP to Crabtree, Roeball, or anybody at seven percent of a number to be determined, when we haven't even entered into any discussions with, with the owner of the, of the property.
Well, would Mr. Newbauer have the ability to thumbs up or thumbs down this depending on the scope of work? I mean, he, he may not support what the determination is by the, by the contractor, thus the, thus entering into a lease on his part right now would, would be premature until he would be able to first see what, what type of work would be conducted inside of his building. I mean, it may be beyond the scope of what, you know, this is temporary. He, I would assume subsequently wants to make some use out of this building after the fact. So he would first have to see what the, the scope of work would be before he could intelligently make a determination of whether he wants to even engage into a lease. We may find ourselves back here a month from now, once again, looking for another facility until such a time as Mr. Newbauer is able to review the scope of work that's going to be conducted by the contractor.
Would you hire somebody who worked on your house for a percentage-
No.
-of, of the cost of the job if you, no.
That's the, unfortunately, that's the way they do it.
Because he's going to make the price as high as he can.
Even if you, even if you go out and hire Mr. Madison, an architect to design a house for you, it's a percentage.
It's a percentage, that's the way they do it.
That's the way things operate.
Yeah, but you at least have a house first. We don't have a building. We don't have, right, we don't have a building.
You're spending plenty of money for a house.
Well, we haven't spent anything yet.
Well, you will.
On that, yeah, controller, I'm sorry?
I just wanted-
It was voted on. Has any money been spent, Controller Lawley, for any, any of these matters that have, how about the soil test, equals later engineering, nothing at all? Okay.
I'm concerned because that's in a flood plain. Anybody dealing with that?
I heard the same thing, that, that it's in a flood zone.
So is the courthouse.
It doesn't matter, the courthouse has been there for a hundred and whatever years, a hundred and all the time.
Still in a flood plain and it would-
And it's hot fire. Calender, it's not-
Evelyn, Evelyn.
Evelyn, you're right, if it's in a flood plain, it would-
Wait a minute, wait, 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 wait. Yeah, we're, we're having a discussion here.
But it must be in order.
Yeah.
Mrs. Vanek, you're correct. Anything that would be deemed in a flood plain creates a, a problem from financing on. You're absolutely correct. I don't know if that site is in a flood plain. I, I could tell you without, without any uncertainty, that the current facility is- Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to go there, it might hurt, but it's, it's definitely in a flood plain.
And I, and I strongly urge and suggest that since we are having our, since we are having our commissioner work sessions, that any and all future, just-
Bless you.
Any and all future discussions regarding this, all of these matters, are addressed at that Thursday, third, third Thursday of the month at 9:30, and that there are no discussions with anyone, whether you're, you know, a prison working group member or one commissioner, nothing outside of that commissioner's work session, so that we can sit down with, with Mr. Newbauer, with the architect, everyone at these meetings, not, not at any subsequent meetings, be it a restaurant, a commissioner's office, here, anywhere else, that those, all those matters are done at that advertised commissioner work session. And in the event that there is anything that would fall under an executive session, obviously, then we would call for that executive session and that, but I don't foresee that because you don't have two parties negotiating. But regardless, all, all, any and all conversations and negotiations and matters has to be done at that commissioner's work session. We, we voted on that?
Yes.
Next one.
Consider selecting Crabtree, Roeball for architectural engineering services and transitional services for the new Fayette County Jail.
The same?
Same percentage.
The same, same company, right?
Yes.
Seven percent?
Yes.
Of, of what?
Of the project, of the, of the cost of directing the jail.
Which is, okay, and since I do not have that prison study, is-
It was a range of about twenty-seven to thirty-one million.
Okay, so, so that would be a not-to-exceed thirty-one million?
Yes.
This was not an easy, easy decision. We had four, four firms that had bid, submitted RFQs, all duly qualified.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion? That's what I'm asking.
I was just saying, they were, all, all the firms were duly qualified and presented, I thought, very, very good, good proposals, so I want to thank them all. No, I didn't make a motion, I was, I was in a spiel.
Just in addition, I'll just comment, I too appreciate all, all four architectural firms, they all extremely professional and their, and their, their proposals and their, you know, not only their proposals, but, you know, we interviewed each one, they, they gave, all gave excellent presentations, they are all highly qualified, respectable firms that, and Mr. Zabrowski is correct, it was very difficult to select one. I wish we could have selected them all, but, but as a result, we had, we had to select one and this was the, you know, the result. So I'll, I'll make the, the motion that we consider selecting Crabtree, Roeball for the architecture engineering and transitional service for the new Fayette County Jail for a cost of seven percent of the project.
I'll second the motion that we select Crabtree and Roeball.
All those in favor?
Nay.
Aye, motion carries. Consider approval of the September seventeenth, 2013 regular commissioner meeting minutes.
Nay.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Consider ratification of the following transfers as listed for a total debit of forty-six thousand, twenty, two-hundred-and-thirty dollars and credits the same.
Nay.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries.
With respect to the two RFQs, was, was there any, and I know in RFQs, there are queues, so I know that price is not a determinant factor, but with the others, what were their percentages?
I don't recall, and they're, they're all, they're all the same, they're all about the same.
Whoever had, do you have a rating sheet, place a copy of that in my box?
Are there any public announcements? I think the Reverend already made his. Are there any public comments?
Again, if I may, this is not something that we want to be doing. And I, I wish there was a, a better solution, one you could make that wouldn't be as controversial, but the reality of it is, and, and I invite you all, take a look over there, go inside if you want, I'll walk with you, the, the facility there is so antiquated and at the rate of, the projected rate of increase of, of inmates, programming or, or relocating thirty here, thirty there, all of it is, ladies and gentlemen, is putting a bandage on a problem. You know, we have to look not just at, at the decision we're making for, for the present, but also for the future. And it's, it's not easy, it's, it's politically incorrect, but somebody's got to make the decision, and it's a tough decision. I, I, I'd prefer not to make it, but somebody's got to do it. Could have did it a long time ago, or we, maybe we wouldn't be here, but the reality is it wasn't done. We could build all the steel buildings you want, the bottom line is, as long as we have a, a criminal justice system, we're going to need correctional facilities. And Fayette County has been ducking its need for a correctional facility for the past twenty years. Again, I, I do apologize for putting this burden on us all, but the fact remains is it, it needs to be corrected. And I, I know we're not telling you things you want to hear, and, and I, and I do, do apologize for that too, but the fact remains is, somebody's got to make this decision or somebody's going to have to shoulder the, the cost five years, ten years from now. And it's not going to go away. And you could come up with all the programming ideas you want, that's not going to correct the problem. The legislatures have continued to create more mandatory, mandatory sentencing that is, is, is not going to be addressed through, through programming. It's only going to be addressed through incarceration. We're building more jails now than we're building schools. Maybe that's a bad reflection in our society, but the fact remains is that's the truth. And again, I do apologize, but this is a necessary item that we needed to address.
Vince, don't apologize, do the right thing, and this is not the right thing.
Well, Evelyn, I-
You don't need to apologize to me, you've had many opportunities to take other roads and have chosen not to.
I can't see a road that-
No, I know you can't see it, that's the sad part.
Because we haven't discussed it, but let's move on.
This is, folks, this is-
Can I say one thing?
Yes, please.
Maybe, no, I won't say, no, I'm going to take maybe back. If you had gone about this in the right way, informed the people every step of the way, took a look at other options, you made up your mind to build a new prison and you didn't look at anything else, you excluded the public from everything concerning this prison. If you had gone the other way and included the taxpayer and the citizens of the county, maybe you wouldn't have this opposition today.
And you wouldn't have to apologize.
And you wouldn't have to apologize, absolutely. But you went about it the wrong way, you kept everything secret, you appointed a board in secret, nobody even knew there was a board for a long time. And you did not include the people. And you have to include the people if you want the people on your side, which you did not do. That, that's it.
I appreciate, I appreciate your comments, your opinions, you're more than welcome to that, but the fact is, we, we didn't do anything in secret, that, you know, we made it, we made it pre, pre-open, you know, we had the newspaper every single meeting, we invited anybody who wanted to participate in the, in the prison working group.
You didn't invite me. You did not invite me.
We put in the paper that citizens were invited, all I asked is that they send me an email and, and, and tell me their names and what skill sets they could bring to the table. That's all, that was the only requirement. And we, and we did, and we got a lot of-
And you didn't make the decision, just like you made the decision at the court.
I haven't turned, I haven't turned anybody, Mr. Madison, I have not, I have not turned anybody away from the person.
I wouldn't believe a thing you said if you had one foot of an attitude feeling other than it greater.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.